Madam Clerk, if you would begin with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Baines. Councilmember Brand. Councilmember Brandau.
Here.
Councilmember Capriolio.
Here.
Councilmember Olivier.
Here.
Councilmember Quintera. And Councilmember Jean.
All right, and then we are going to begin our meeting then with an invocation by Minister Matt Phillips of Woodward Park Church. Matt, if you'd step up and then let's all rise and when Matt's done praying, we'll salute our flag. It's one that I'm going to lead. It's the American Lung Association, and I'm going to ask Susie Rico-Vasquez to join me right down front, and we are going to do a proclamation for the American Lung Association. I was asked to wear turquoise today, and as you can see, I didn't quite get it right. I got it close. So what I found out in putting this proclamation together is that lung cancer is now the number one killer of women. Is that correct?
Yeah.
And so it really affects a lot of women, and of course, and we have some pretty serious health air issues in our valley, so we're probably impacted even more than the national average, would be my guess.
Definitely.
Definitely, okay. Well, I would like you to say a few things about that. You know more about it than I do. Tell us about lung cancer with women, and then we're going to read a proclamation and I'll present it to the both of you.
Actually, can I pass this over to Dennis? He has something prepared for us.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you all. My name is Dennis Achoka. I'm a student intern with National University, volunteering, doing my internship with the American Lung Association. Here's the proclamation acceptance script. We want to thank the Fresno City Council, Council Board of Supervisors, for recognizing the inaugural National Women's Lung Health Week. Every five minutes, a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer, and every eight minutes, a woman in the U.S. dies of the disease. Women are 62 percent more likely to have asthma, and that's 7 percent more likely to have COPD than men. And unfortunately, lung disease in women is undiagnosed and untreated due to lack of awareness. So we are here today to make the awareness to our community, especially Fresno and other cities or counties, so we can make awareness of the lung diseases or COPD. We need more research, advocacy, and education to raise the understanding about our early diagnosis and treatment of lung disease in women. We have the opportunity to save the lives, and the time is now. We invite the community to join us in our quest to empower women to fight lung cancer, save lives, and improve lung health. Visit our website at www.lungforce, spell L-U-N-G-force, F-O-R-C-E dot org, to learn more about how you can get active and make a difference today. And don't forget to wear takis, the shalamarili, this week in honor of National Women's Lung Health Week, because every woman deserves a chance. Thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you, Dennis. We appreciate that and everything that you're doing to make communities like ours aware of this situation. I'm going to read a few lines from the proclamation, then we'll take a picture, and I think we're done. "Whereas every five minutes, a woman in the United States is told she has lung cancer, and whereas lung cancer is the number one cancer killer of women in the United States, surpassing breast cancer in 1987, and the lung cancer death rate in women has more than doubled in the last 35 years, and whereas Lung Force," that's your organization, "whereas Lung Force is the new national movement led by the American Lung Association, with the mission of making lung cancer and lung disease history, and uniting women to stand together with a collective strength and determination to lead the fight against lung cancer and for lung health. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swerengen and the council members of the city of Fresno, do hereby proclaim the week of May 12 through the 16th, 2014, to be Women's Lung Health Week in the city of Fresno. Encourage all residents of the city of Fresno to learn more about the detection and treatment of lung cancer and lung disease." Thank you guys very much. We appreciate everything that you do. Let me give you this proclamation, the official one. Dennis, if you want to grab that. Take a picture. Thank you. So this was close enough. The turquoise.
That's good.
Thank you for being gracious. Thank you for everything you do, Dennis.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilman Brand, I think you're up next, and I didn't bring any notes down here to read, so come down and tell us what we're celebrating today.
I'm here to make it, this is a proclamation for Fugman School, and our principal, Mrs. Graham, is here. About two weeks ago, I went to a award ceremony to recognize 10 years in District 6, and they received the National Blue Ribbon Award, which is only one of 286 schools in the country received, and theirs goes consistently on the top of the Clovis Schools in AP scores. And before I give you this proclamation, city clerk, would you read the proclamation?
Whereas in 2004, a new school opened to accommodate the rapid growth taking place in the northeast area of Fresno. Whereas Fugman Elementary, in its first year, earned a California Academic Performance Index score of 930, the second highest score earned by a CUSD school that year. Students and parents and staff continue to take pride in their high performance, and each year aim to improve their already excellent standards. Whereas cultural diversity involving staff, community, and parents of the school has been the priority for everyone at Fugman Elementary. Programs and events are designed to enhance students' educational experience and offer understanding and unity in the diversity. And whereas Fugman Elementary is not only celebrating their 10-year anniversary, they are also one of only 286 schools nationwide to receive the 2013 National Blue Ribbon Award. Fugman Elementary's mighty Marlins continue to be a force to be reckoned with, as they strive to be America's benchmark for excellence in education and through the strength of a cohesive and united community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Fresno join in recognizing and congratulating Fugman Elementary upon their anniversary and for the outstanding achievements, and do proclaim May 15, 2014, to be Fugman Elementary.
I should write that rock list myself next time. Please give them a big hand.
This is a great honor for Fugman Elementary School, and I wish we could have brought students who are finishing up our testing, and so we're in the heat of the end of the school year, but this is a great honor that I accept for Fugman Elementary School and all students involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Councilman Baines. We are going to celebrate the proclamation of Reserve Police Officer Joe L. Infousto Day, and Councilman Baines, you're going to be leading us.
All right, well, listen, we are here to celebrate the 43 years of service of Officer Joe Infousto, and listen, I'm not going to get too carried away right now, because we have a presentation, and I really want to let the chief go through the presentation, and we'll have a moment to celebrate.
Okay, I think, Dave, you're going to go through that, or do you want me to? Are you sure? Come up here and, is there any buttons you want me to hit, or are you going to hit them? That's okay. Don't do that to me. Let me just, first off, I'd like for Joe to come up here, if you can, and if you want to come by yourself, or you want to bring family, that's good, too. Let me just give you a little history about Joe. You know, there's three things, three words that come to mind when I think about him, and that is sacrifice, dedication, and service, and there's a reason behind that. He has been a volunteer for over 43 years now. 36 of those with the Fresno Police Department as a reserve officer, seven years as a reserve officer with the Clovis Police Department. He recently retired from his position as a reserve, but has now continued on as a volunteer in policing, so that he can continue with his duties in the mounted patrol unit. He also, prior to any volunteerism, he served four years in the United States Army, and so service is really a part of his life. And I also got to say that in terms of the mounted patrol, he is the one that makes it work out there. He's the guy that is always available, always willing, no matter if it's a weekend or a holiday, to be available to be on our mounted patrol, and I appreciate that about him. And in the midst of all of that, he also had a very, very successful alarm business, Bestec, and it was very, very successful, and I believe retired from that, sold that business in about 2006 or so, so that he could be, spend more time in the police department. And so I tell you what, this guy's got more hours on our department than the vast majority of our police officers, and he is somebody that I really want to just say thank you to, and have everybody please stand up and give him a welcome applause. And also, I also wanted to present Joe with his badge. I don't think he knew this was coming, but we want to present him with his badge that obviously we're going to retire out, and Joe, you've earned this and a whole lot more. And so thank you to you, to your family, the sacrifices that were made, incredible. We love you. Thank you.
The only thing I have to say is, I'm thankful to the city and to my wife to allow me to have done what I love to do. That's about it.
Man a few words, but a lot of volunteers.
Don't sit down, don't sit down just yet. Yeah, I know, it's a little bit more embarrassing to go, and listen, because I want to say a couple of words right before we have the clerk read our proclamation. You know, I was a police officer for just about 12 years with Fresno Police Department, and I can tell you, the timing of this is appropriate, seeing as how we're coming off the heels of some great national recognition for the service that police officers give in the line of duty to this country. But I want to take a moment and say, I can't, when I was having to read your proclamation and having to understand everything about the service that he's done, 43 years of service to put on a uniform and a badge and protect this city is remarkable and incredible, and you have my utmost respect. I can tell you that every single day, when a police officer puts on a uniform like the chief has right now, their lives are in danger, whether from being a target or rather from being involved in a call that's highly dangerous. So every single day, and he did this for, you know, almost for, you know, four decades, so I'd say the utmost respect to me, Joe, and this proclamation and so much more you're truly deserving of. And with that, Madam Clerk, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Whereas Officer Joe Infousto is commended for his 43 years of commitment and dedication to our safety of our community by serving the police reserve officer. Officer Infousto officially retired December 31, 2013, and whereas Officer Infousto received an honorable discharge from the U.S. Army in 1962 after serving his country for four years. Officer Infousto began his law enforcement career with the Clovis Police Department Auxiliary Unit in 1970, and served that community for seven years until he transferred to the Fresno Police Department Reserve Unit in 1977. Officer Infousto served the city of Fresno for the next 36 years, receiving numerous condemnations in his service and professionalism, including achieving the rank of lieutenant in 1999. Whereas Officer Infousto was a small business owner who started ESTEC Security in 1983 and provided state-of-the-art security systems and equipment to the Central Valley for 23 years before retiring and selling the business in 2006. Whereas for 43 years, Officer Infousto volunteered to put the badge and carry on his sworn duty to protect and serve. He focused on keeping neighborhoods safe and doing the right thing by his fellow officers. With quiet courage, he helped fulfill the demanding task of shielding the citizens of Fresno from harm. Officer Infousto continues to volunteer with the mounted unit, tending to the horses, and whereas Officer Infousto deserves our deepest respect, because when darkness and dangers threaten our public peace, he was ready to lay down his life to protect our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Ashley Swerengen and the members of the Fresno City Council, do by here declare May 15, 2014, to be Reserve Police Officer Joe Infousto's Day in the city of Fresno.
We have a couple of also proclamations. We have Raj Rukar from Assemblymember Henry T. Perea's office, and we also have Kristy Burman from Congressman Jim Costa's office that are here to present proclamations to you as well. Rukar?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Raj Ruker, and on behalf of Assemblymember Perea, I'll just read the last line of the resolution, since it gets a little long. "Resolved by Assemblymember Henry T. Perea that Reserve Police Officer Joe Infousto of the Fresno Police Department Reserve Unit be honored on the occasion of his well-earned retirement commended on his superior record of dedicated and highly effective law enforcement service, and extended the sincere gratitude and appreciation of the public." Thank you.
Honored to be here on behalf of Congressman Costa to present to you Congressional Record. Read into the record as of May 15. Mr. Speaker, I'll only read the first paragraph. "I rise today to recognize Mr. Joe Infousto as he retires after 43 years of public service as a police reserve officer. Joe's commitment and dedication to serving his community deserves to be commended." Congratulations.
Thank you.
Joe, on behalf of the Fresno Police Department Reserve Unit, we'd like to present you with a gift for all your work you've done. I started out with Joe, actually been around a little bit longer than me, but not much, and I was, he was my sergeant, my lieutenant, and now we work together at the mounted unit. So it's been, it's been an honor working with him. But on behalf of the Reserve Unit, we'd like to present you with a retirement badge also that you can carry with you. Okay. Thank you.
Our final proclamation of the day is increasing export opportunities in partnership with the Center for International Trade Development Day, and that's also from my office, so I'm going to step down front again, and I would last ask Amy Fuentes to meet me down there, and also any members from the board, from the State Center Community College District, if you could join me up front also. Is that the story? Dr. Rayly. Amy, come on over here just for a second. So you guys have had a busy day. We're moving forward with our fourth annual Food Expo, and the three that we've already had have been fantastic, but every year we grow in size and in strength, and so this is going to be our fourth one, and it's coming up in July, right? And so we're all getting ready for that, and prior to the expo, you do a lot of planning ahead of that event to make our businesses aware of what the expo does, and also opportunities available to them. So why don't you tell us a little bit about the expo and the group of people we have around us, and then I'll read a proclamation.
Absolutely. Today, so some of the things we do for all of the food and beverage companies that participate in the Fresno Food Expo is we host trainings to get them prepared for the Food Expo, and today's training was especially important. It actually kicked off our, a series of trainings, of which we'll do three altogether, but today's really kicked it off, and we did it in partnership with the Center for International Trade Development, and they are our lead partner for international trade, and they are housed in the State Center Community College District, and they are a vital partner to the Fresno Food Expo efforts, because what they do is they bring resources and tools and everything that a local company needs in order to begin exporting their products. And what's so great about their resources is they are valuable to both companies that are not currently exporting, but also to companies that are currently exporting and looking to expand their markets. So today I am here with, we have Vice Chancellor Dr. Rayly for the State Center Community College District, and then two of the members of the Board of Trustees, both Dottie Smith and Ron, can you?
Nishinaka.
Thank you. And then Alicia Rios as well, who's the Director for the Center of International Trade Development, and really it was their team that led this morning's training. We had close to 50 different companies here, all learning about how to export their products, and that's going to be a critical, that's going to play a critical role in this year's Food Expo. So, and our goal with it in the long run really is to help our local companies continue to expand their markets, and with the help of CITD, we actually get an opportunity to bring in international buyers, so we'll be expecting them again this year.
Fantastic. Doctor, would you like to say anything, or any of you?
We are, on behalf of the State Center Community College District and our chancellor, we are very pleased and excited about the partnership we have with Mayor Swerengen and the Fresno Food Expo, and we are delighted, along with all of my staff, to work with such a fine group and organization. On behalf of the economic development of our community, in particular, that area of ag, which we all need, we all need very much, and want to see to be very much successful, and so we are happy to be a part of that, of that great effort. And so thank you very much for this proclamation.
Well, thank you, and now I'm going to read a few words, and if anybody else wants to jump in, you feel free. I'm going to read a partial of our proclamation today, because many of the things you guys have both talked about. Whereas the fourth annual Fresno Food Expo will be held on July 24, 2014, in Fresno, and whereas the Fresno Food Expo is an exclusive regional food show that offers the San Joaquin Valley's finest food growers, producers, brewers, and winemakers an opportunity to connect with key players from international, domestic, regional, and local food and beverage buying channels, and whereas the Fresno Food Expo offers our region's food and beverage companies an opportunity to expand their customer base into international markets by bringing international buyers to the expo in partnership with the Center for International Trade Development, part of the State Center Community College District, and whereas the Fresno Food Expo, on behalf of the city of Fresno and the Center for International Trade Development, State Center Community College District, will continue to work collaboratively to bring export opportunities for food and beverage companies located here in the San Joaquin Valley in order to bring greater economic vitality to our region, and now therefore, be it resolved that I, Council President Steve Brandau, do hereby proclaim May 15, 2014, to be increasing export opportunities in partnership with the Center for International Trade Development Day in the city of Fresno, and I congratulate the Fresno Food Expo and the Center for International Trade Development, State Center Community College District, and have joined together to promote and export opportunities in our region. So thank you very much. Thank you for everything you're doing in our community, and the event that you held today, and the fact that you invited us to lunch with you.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate your time in Fresno and everything you're doing for our region. Thank you. So you know what? Let me put this down, and I'm going to present this to you. Doctor, is that okay? And if you guys all want to crunch in? All right, thank you very much. All right, well, we always have a lot of things going on in our city, so now we're on to the approval of minutes with the city of Clovis Special Joint Meeting that took place on April 29, 2014. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to those minutes, or? Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Need a second to vote? All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, aye. Motion passes 7-0. And now on to the approval of minutes for the meeting here on May 1, 2014. Madam Clerk, do we have any changes to those minutes?
I'd like to amend the meetings, the minutes of the meeting of May 1, page 2, where I'm quoted, and I'd like to add to that sentence the following words, "since they were delivered at the very last minute before the meeting." I think that needs to be included in that, and I would make a motion to include those in that meeting minutes.
And I'll second your motion. So we have, so we're going to vote to include these words, Madam Clerk, is that correct?
Yeah, you'd be voting for approval with that amendment.
Okay, so we're going to vote for approval with that amendment in that. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Now we are on to council member reports and comments, and any council members? Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you, Council President. I would request that today's meeting be adjourned in memory of George Salwasser Jr., whose life was tragically ended last Thursday on his ranch in Biola. He was a great father, a great family man, an excellent farmer, and a friend to all, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Capriolio. Any other council comments? All right, then I'm going to just ask, make a quick comment and ask a question from our city manager, Bruce Rudd. Bruce, so about six weeks ago or so, we voted, I think, to have spent some money on a study for the landfill situation between the city of Fresno and the county of Fresno. I guess that contract's coming to an end pretty quick. I guess that contract's coming to an end pretty quick, and then, and then our counterparts over at the county were also going to be a part of that study, is that right? Could you kind of fill me in on how that's working?
Again, the study was to look at the operation of the American landfill, the underlying assumptions and costs that have essentially impacts the tipping charges or the rates that we as, as well as others pay. Council approved a contract about 68 weeks ago with Bob Hilton's firm, who's done a lot of work for us in the past. They're going to be the ones who conduct the study. The Board of Supervisors took action about two weeks ago, they approved that, that contract, so that study will be moving forward.
Okay. So the study's just now getting underway. Any idea how long that takes to, tell us about that situation?
They believe that the study and maybe subsequent negotiations could take anywhere from four to six months.
Four to six months?
Yes.
The contracts due up in about six weeks or two months, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Would we just continue?
We will be looking at other options, up to and including a month-to-month agreement. I've made it very clear to Mr. Navarrete that my expectation is that if we continue to provide material to the American landfill, that the rate that we pay now will be the ongoing rate, until which time we end up, if we end up, in negotiating a new agreement. In the meantime, we are also looking at other alternatives, so we're keeping all of our options open.
All right, cool. Thank you. That's what I needed to know. All right, final chance. Any other council comments? All right. Now then, we are on to the consent calendar, or we have to approve today's agenda then. Do I have a motion to approve today's agenda? There's been any changes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have a couple of changes. First of all, we're moving the Maritime Day Proclamation to next week, May 22, and then we're also going to have, when we get to general admin, items 2E and 2H need to have information read into the records by staff.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second for that amended agenda, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Now we're on to today's consent calendar, and I'll first go out to the public and ask if any members of the public would like to talk about any of the items on today's consent calendar, please step up to the microphone, and you'll have three minutes to address our consent calendar. Mrs. Hunt.
You got my card. You know, this is not the same agenda that I got this morning when I went out there, because we didn't have this revised on here. Now, there's something wrong if you guys don't get the information that you need when time for you to discuss it on the council, don't make sense to me. Well, on this one, the FEMA, that's a good food program out there, then we have one about this sewage plant. Now, the one I seen this morning had a City of Clovis on there, but this one here don't have a council district on it, it's got Information Service Department. Now, since when do Information Service Department can get on here, on the agenda and get anything? They are information service. So that, and they won five votes for $200,000 for a system replacement fund to replace the hardware that has passed its end of service life. Now, I'm thinking that's that dump, that sewage we got out there drinking that recycled sewage water in District 5 and District 3, and they trying to hide this thing, because the Clovis should have stepped up to the plate, if it is, and paid for some of that old money after birth and all that other crap come out, come out here for us to use for their drinking water, they should pay a part of this. Then when I come down here to E1 on the Homeland Security, and I admire them 129,000 times because they stood up to the plate for this domestic preparedness from the State Homeland Security Program funded through the county, and then they, Homeland Security up here again for number 2E, and that's to provide equipment and support to the Community Emergency Response Team. And now that was our department, because we get, we didn't even fix our fire trucks, big old fire letters, we ain't fixed nothing around here, didn't even order nothing, it take a year to get something here for a fire. But that's why I admire that Homeland Security, because they stood up to the plate to make sure that we have something, especially when they got all those fires going down San Diego and Cucamonga and everywhere else down that place. Then the last one right here is the sales tax. Now, we got a profit sharing agreement with the city and the county, the city, and that's that fair of influence annexation, we get 33% of the money, and the county get about 40 or 60 something percent, and that's against the law, because the voters haven't approved that fair of influence annexation that they, we got, that's why everybody broke, annexation. And when you guys bring something up to the council, you ought to be able to read this thing, it already tells you what it is, and not just put some words up here and think the audience know what you're talking about. And that's what I put on you, Ms. Yvonne, because that's your job, we got to give them a sound decision, they go for you, Mr. City Attorney, because you got to have something so they can make a sound decision on any kind of item that come before these people up here, because they got enough trouble themselves. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to comment on the consent calendar? All right. Any council members like to comment on any items on today's consent calendar? All right, looks like we're all clear. Then do I have a motion to approve today's consent calendar?
No.
Do I have a second?
No.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. All right. Now we are on to general admin item, let's see, yes, 2A, actions pertaining to IUOC, oh, excuse me, IUOE, stationary engineers local 39.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I'm Ken Phillips, Labor Relations Manager in the Personnel Services Department. I'm bringing before you a successor MOU with Local 39 for your approval. This MOU has been ratified by the union's membership. Some highlights of the proposed MOU are that, one, we're getting, we're picking, they are picking up 4% of the employer's share of retirement. They are also picking up a larger share of health and welfare costs from the current 20% to 25%, and will share 50/50 in future increases. There's also reduction of two personal holidays and an annual paydown of holiday accruals in order to reduce future liabilities for the city. There is, perhaps as importantly as many of these, an end to the task system in solid waste, which has been in place for many, many years. Along with that is a plan to improve attendance or move to changed overtime rules for residential solid waste drivers. There are changes in layoff procedures and a cap on sick leave accruals, among other changes to these MOUs. The savings resulting from all these provisions is expected to equal $1.8 million in the first year, with additional savings expected from the changes to solid waste work rules. The proposed MOU would be effective through June 30 of 2016. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Local 39 for the cooperation and hard work that it took to get to this place, and for stepping up to help the city to reach good financial health. Staff request that council approve the MOU. I'm available for any council questions.
Thank you, Ken. First, we'll go out to the public and invite any members of the public, and Marina, you, actually Marina turned in a card for this one, so Marina, you're up first.
Yeah.
Yep, and then Barbara, you can jump in, anybody else can make a comment after Marina.
I've been here in a long time, Marina Magdaleno, 46, 44, West Jaclyn. Council members, I'd like to speak to you today. You know, as you know, we, I'm going to be real nice today, okay, Bruce? We were in negotiations for over two years, and, and I have to say that I, I want to thank my counterpart, Ken Phillips, because we can agree to disagree, and we get into it sometimes, and we have some, we had some fierce fights, that I think both our blood pressures were at all-time high, but, but I can say that when we come out of it, we come out in friendly terms, we don't take anything personal, and, and he has a job to do, and I have a job to do. But saying that, I do believe that we could have accomplished all that we accomplished in this MOU in a more expedient manner than, than two years. I also believe that we didn't have to spend, on either side, the money that we did by going to impasse and to fact-finding. I believe that the city needs to work a little harder on being a little more fiscally conservative. You tell us that you want that from us, and we're happy to, to be partners in this, and, and I hope that none of the other bargaining units that are at the table right now have to go through the same experience that Local 39 went through, because it, when all is said and done, it didn't get us, you didn't get anything more, and I didn't give up anything, anything more as well. I think we, we are where I initially thought we would always be, even a year ago. I know that Measure G may have added to some of the timeline, but even with that, I, I still think that we could have accomplished this a lot, lot sooner. I would really like to see, and I have discussed this with some of you, that you have a really good in-house team here with, with both Jeffrey and with Ken, and they're both, Ken is very competent in what he does, and I firmly believe that you don't need to be, to bring outside counsel and pay the amount of money that you have been paying. I'd like to see what the bill is going to be for those folks that sat through the day of, of our fact-finding, because I think that when you talk about prudent, when you talk about being fiscally conservative, I think that, you know, the city needs to step up to that plate and demonstrate that so that the employees out there can see that both sides are really, really taking care of business. I thank you, and hopefully we won't do this in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, Marina. Anybody else like to address council on this issue?
Why don't you come out, somebody else, there's one card up there.
Did you turn in a card for this one?
If I don't, I got a bunch of more in my hand.
Okay, well, you're good.
Yes, I'll be able to, he brought them to you, that's enough. One for another one I got up here. You know, it, it don't make sense for this woman here, she works for, like a union for these people here, and you guys are the city council, and y'all supposed to make this sound decision, but what about these people out here doing all this work, got to pay their bills and stuff, feed their kids and stuff while y'all play games? I see this game playing all the time, ain't no big shot around this place, them people, y'all work for us. Them people out here working, trying to make a living, trying to take care of bills, y'all going to fight for 25 cents over here, dollar here, when y'all get all that money on your check and your bills is paid. Plus, you guys like, as I say, y'all jiggles money, she jiggles money around in circles. It don't make sense for these people to get out here, blue collar, working a successor. Is that the successor agency? The one you, the president, over here, Mr. Banks, the one that the state of California is supposed to be handling for redevelopment? You got to word these things right so people know what you're talking about out here. That's that new man's job to make somebody informed and making that hundred and some thousand dollars, supposed to be some kind of informant, let the folks know what goes on. I ain't even met him yet. Make more money than Bruce Rudd up here, and Bruce been here since years way back. Don't make sense. And you guys got this lady, she come up here all the time, watch her, she had to come up here, she ain't doing her job right. This supposed to been taken care of a long time, her check is coming on, she ain't up here looking for no money from you for her, she looking for these blue collar people up here, and it's not fair, so they got to sit around here and do y'all job and keep money, keep y'all out of jail and every doggone thing else, and do these papers right for you guys, and then y'all going to hold their money up for a little bit of little items that they, it shouldn't even have to come before y'all, because you got the money there, you should pay them their money like you pay everybody else, like you pay your PGNB bill, your rent. Miss one or two rent payments, you going to be homeless, and that's what the decision God going to give y'all, because y'all not taking care of their people the way God wants you to. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right. Any council members have any thoughts or comments? Councilman Brand.
I wanted to thank the city negotiators and Marina and her group. This was a, I think it was a two-year city manager, two-year process, and I've been here now, got to go, five and a half years, and what I've learned in my time here is ideally you'd like to have a certain level, certain, on each MOU and containing cost, and in the end, it's almost impossible to ever get what you want, and so you try to find those big items that you think you can live with, that show both sides making efforts to find a reasonable compromise, and I think the thing that I think bothered me and probably a lot of people the most was the task system, and I'm really glad to hear that that has been addressed, and, you know, hopefully it'll have an impact too down the road on, on rates, so I want to, again, thank the, both sides for finally reaching a long, long agreement. So I'll make a motion to pass the issue.
All right. Councilman Shong.
Councilman, I'll second that motion. Just also a quick ditto for, for, for our staff, and also Marina and the group as well. It's always better, even though it's taken a long time, that the groups came to this process, long-waited process to an agreement. It's always interesting when it comes back up here to council, and I would never, if I could, to put that situation up here, because you never know what happened, and so for the group to work extremely hard, tough decisions that are made, just Marina, let, let the staff Local 39 know, thank you so much for their, for their effort in moving our city forward, and thanks, Ken, for, for the crew and the team.
Any other council members? So I have a clear screen, and I have a motion and a second, so we're ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay. Motion passes five two. All right. On to general admin item 2B, submission and acceptance of City of Fresno Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, and from the Finance Department.
Thank you, Council President, members of council, city manager, city attorney. Before you today is the presentation, the formal presentation of the City of Fresno Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFR, and the single audit report for fiscal year in 2013. The CAFR report is certified as the official publication of the city's financial position at June 30, 2013, and reflects the final audited results of operations for the fiscal year-end for all city activities and funds. The CAFR was prepared using GASB Statement 34, Basic Financial Statements and Management's Discussion and Analysis for State and Local Governments. Once again, the city has met all reporting deadlines associated with the CAFR, as well as the single audit, and all reports have been filed with federal and state government agencies, as well as those associated with our reporting and disclosure requirements related to IMMA. IMMA is the Electronic Municipal Market Access System, and is the official repository for all information virtually on all municipal bonds, including those for the City of Fresno and all of our debt covenants. In addition, we met the filing deadlines for participation in the Government Finance Officers Association Program, the Certificate of Achievements in Financial Reporting Program. This is our 21st year of participation in that program. The CAFR reflects that in fiscal year 2013, the city once again planned and built its budget on conservative estimates. However, it also reflects that the Fresno, City of Fresno continues to feel the effects and be impacted by the fiscal challenges in the economy. Although the total assets of the city exceeded its liabilities at the close of June 30, 2013, governmental activities, generally those services that are provided only by a government, actually drew down citywide assets, whereas enterprise assets or business-type governmental activities contributed 47.3 million to the bottom line. It can be seen that governmental activities to continue to spend more than they bring in at this particular point in time, but what continues to be of more and even greater concern to both city management and the auditors is the fact that ongoing cash flow struggles continue for the city, and the lack of reserve continues. Overall, while the general fund at June 30, 2013 reflected a positive $6.7 million fund balance, this is a net figure. This figure is made up of $12.7 million, which is non-spendable, and is reflective of such items as inventories, prepaid expenses, and long-term receivables. $435,369 was restricted, meaning that there were constraints on these imposed externally by creditors, grantors, laws, and regulations. $1.9 million was committed to the emergency reserve, and this included $400,000 set aside for the 27th pay period. $1.1 million was identified and assigned, which means that this represents money set aside by budgetary action. The remaining $9.4 million within the general fund was negative and unassigned. the general fund was negative and unassigned. Were this balance positive, it would represent unassigned amounts available for any purpose. However, being negative, what this represents is that the general fund had more liabilities than it had assets that could be quickly and immediately converted to cash. The emergency reserve identified as being committed still remains at a meager $1.9 million, up from $1.4 million in the previous year. The only increase due to the emergency reserve had to do with interest earnings of $21,765. No additional contributions were made to the emergency reserve during fiscal year 2013. I also want to point out in the staff report, those two numbers were incorrectly stated. What they represented in the staff report was 2011 and 2012. So I'm correcting this on the record now, the new, what the corrected numbers are. As required by the city charter, the amounts reflected in the 2013 CAFR have been audited by an independent accounting, certified accounting firm. The unmodified opinion of Macias, Jeanne, and O'Connell is included in the CAFR report. As part of their audit procedures, they must follow the guidelines of GASBY 56, which requires management and auditors to consider and evaluate indicators that there may be a substantial doubt about a government entity's ability to continue as a going concern. You will recall that last year was the first year that the city received a going concern. We once again went through the same process evaluating all of the indicators that could require that we issue a going concern. These indicators include negative trends, other indications of possible financial difficulties, internal matters, and external matters. I've included in great detail within the CAFR as well as cover memos provided to you, the various different aspects that were looked at underneath of those indicators. All of these factors together, along with the guidance in GASBY 56, provides a framework to assist management, the audit committee, and finance teams to determine whether or not it is appropriate to adopt a going concern basis for the preparation of the financial statements and in making balanced, proportionate, and clear disclosures. Once again, we felt that it was prudent that we continue with the going concern. In order to plan and conduct their audit, the auditors also must obtain an understanding of the city's internal accounting system. They do this by evaluating and testing as well as interviewing personnel. As a result of obtaining that understanding and as a result of performing tests of controls, the auditor may note reportable conditions, material weaknesses, and/or opportunities for strengthening internal controls. Provided to you as part of your packet was a letter to management reflecting items noting during the performance of their audit. As per council request last year, the audit committee and the full council was given expanded access to the CAFR process during its preparation. The audit committee was included in the auditor conducted SaaS 99 meetings in August of 2013, which is part of the early planning stages of the audit. In addition, the auditors met with the audit committee the week of March 17th to go over a draft copy of the CAFR. In addition, on March 19th, 2014, all members of council were provided a copy of the draft CAFR, along with a memo highlighting some key areas of the CAFR. On March 27th, after much labor and long hours, the CAFR was completed and was actually uploaded to EMA. Subsequent to that, the management letter was completed as well as what the Finance Department lovingly calls the Reader's Digest version of the CAFR, which you may recognize. This document is a summarized version and hits the high points within the CAFR. The budget is also discussed within the CAFR and it is the proposed spending blueprint for the city. Generally, what it discloses is the spending for the next 12 months, but also on a go-forward basis. The CAFR reflects the city's financial condition, which includes total assets, investments, and liabilities. While each of these documents have a particular purpose, they are deeply interrelated and should be used in conjunction with one another as you make your decisions on behalf of the city and its citizens. As noted throughout the CAFR and various other reports provided to you, the city is gradually seeing improvement, but we still have a very long way to go before declaring solid, sustainable fiscal stability. There were many financial achievements, however, during fiscal year 2013 and one in particular stands out. You may recall that two funds last year, the DBCP Recovery Fund and the Commercial Solid Waste Fund loaned $1.4 million to address the parking fund imbalance. While the terms of the loan called for repayment over a period not to exceed five months, council and staff and management made the prudent decisions to pay down that loan as quickly as they possibly could. And as of the date of the financial statement, March 27th, the loan had been paid down to approximately $5.9 million. Quite an achievement. I would also like to, in closing, thank all of the various numerous individuals throughout the city and departments that helped to contribute to the preparation of the CAFR, to all of your contributions along the way, as well as city management and the mayor. This is a great undertaking on the part of the city and is certainly something that everyone contributes to. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you Karen. All right. We have members of the public that'd like to address this issue. Mrs. Hunt, you're up first. Then anybody else can be after Barbara.
You know, it don't make sense for people come up here and talk. We don't, we can't understand a word they're saying when they're talking about finances, about money. But one thing I did hear is that general plan. And the general plan, Southwest Fresno is not on that general plan. So there's a lot of money missing from that. So that should be in that package for this financial thing you're talking about. Because the money for Southwest Fresno, they call us the Edison community and we're not even on the general plan. And then we got all that CBG money, we got Home Finance, we got all kinds of money, we got this downtown money, the family brothers got all this land. We haven't talked about all that money. So whatever she's talking about, it wasn't loud enough so the people can hear. But I got the papers, the whole package in the car. And I'm gonna read it and talk to you guys about it when I take it to the FBI. All the time when I'm hearing about something goes on, shooting killings on Southwest Fresno, it's always Southwest Fresno. And all those signs over there says Southeast Fresno. Even Brandy don't know what that is in Southeast and Southwest. But the planning commission gave me a letter and I gave you guys a copy to know Southeast is over here. My district, Sal's district, Banks district, Barnes district, they all collide together. That's why like three peas in a pod. That's why they all stick together. I wanna know where, and I didn't hear another drop about no financial money, about where's all the money for Southwest Fresno, because we're not on the map. Where's our money? Where's our voting papers? All my voting papers say Southeast. How can somebody vote for me when all my signs say Southeast and a little bird round here pulling my signs up every time I put something down? I'm not putting nothing down. I'm gonna get me a lawyer. And Chief Dar knows. He, and Margaret Mim knows. And all these people, all these people going to jail, prosecutors, they know that those signs say Southeast because they got signs up out there right now. Larson knows. They talking about it's too much money to change all the addresses and then they got the signs to change. We can't do nothing about it. Mr. Olivia, when I come up in here, he gonna tell me maybe we can make two districts. I said, yeah, when you give all our money back because some of that West Fresno is in his, Southeast Fresno is in his district. You guys are playing games with us. Where's our money for Southwest Fresno? Where's our equal justice for all our residents over there? And if you guys gonna be a government up here and you knows all this, it's a crime going on right now because you got the paperwork and I gave it to you. Margaret Mim's know it, that fear of influence, I can say something right now and all of them be in trouble. About the boundaries, about the overlapping of the board of supervisors' boundaries, about the overlapping of the police power, about, I can say a lot of stuff about that boundaries and that police stuff. And those little prosecutor jokes will be a joke compared to what I'll talk about if they don't come up with why my sign says Southeast and the people can't vote over there. You want me start talking about the power the police got? You want me start talking about the power that the Margaret Mim's and all direct prosecutors, they out there arguing back and forth about Margaret Mim's and everybody, that fear of influence, annexation, that profit sharing agreement. Judge Kane told them, don't go nowhere until they do downtown area. I can talk about a lot of things and I'm gonna do it on unscheduled or communication. Matter of fact, I am tired of this crap.
All right. Any other members of the public like to address this item? All right. Then at council, Councilman Brand, you're up.
Karen, I want to first thank our former city manager, Mark Scott, for introducing this to the CAFR concept. It's always been here, but I think Mark elevated the issue and really illustrated the importance of this CAFR, that for a number of years, we were getting reports that everything was fine by our auditors when we knew in fact there were significant problems from the enterprise fund, you know, funding the general fund operations. And you've always been a consistent person out there, Karen, and I really appreciate the work you've done. And this has the same going concern comment as we had last year, right?
Yes, it does.
Now, I think they noted that things were better than last year, but that basically means there's a question, a serious question, whether the City of Fresno would be around as a legal solvent entity within 12 months, correct?
Correct. Generally speaking, 12 months is the indicator and then they are also asked to look a few months beyond that, about 15 months. It doesn't necessarily mean that the city will be gone because obviously there are services that a city must provide. It does, however, mean that there is concern from the standpoint of cash flow and being able to meet obligations.
Right. You know, on this one addition to the package, this is a comparison of S&amp;P. And when you're compared to cities like Detroit, that's not too good. So we're compared to Chicago and Detroit.
S&amp;P did not compare us to Detroit or Chicago. That was something that we did.
Okay.
The Finance Department. Simply because a white paper was presented pointing out the differences between Chicago and Detroit as to why Detroit was required to file for protection and Chicago was not. And we found it quite interesting, the comparisons between the two, and we're curious as to how we stacked up between those two cities. So that was simply something we did. It also uses the new methodology that S&amp;P now ranks cities. The City of Fresno, once you have a going concern, that automatically puts you in a certain area with respect to rankings. But it was quite interesting, the comparisons between the two.
Yeah. And you look at this and, and this is a striking feature that really reflects, you know, a lot of our economic problems here is that like Chicago has a median income of $75,000 and we're, we are $46,000, you know. And that speaks a lot about the issues here of poverty and economy and trying to, you know, really, I don't give a, our problem is raising sufficient funds to the traditional sources like property taxes and sales taxes and so on to pay for all the services that we have. And that will continue to be a problem.
If I could also point out something else, what was quite interesting in the comparison.
Well, Chicago, Detroit, and, and it was good, it was a good illustration and contrast between even Chicago, which had a strong economy, but they have also huge problems on unfunded pension obligations and other issues. And of course, we all know the problems about Detroit.
The strength that Chicago has, however, which is interesting, and this is a problem for all cities within California. Chicago can increase taxes and other funding sources without having to go to the voters. In California, that is a difficulty that all cities face and that we're rather restricted in the sources of revenue that we can generate.
You're talking about Prop 13?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, actually, I like Prop 13. I'm not gonna talk bad about it. And the final item really that caught my attention was the, the cash flow issue that I think we're probably, we're better, we've improved on the structural part of it. But in certain ways, we're actually maybe a little more problematic on the cash flow, particularly the timing of federal grants that seem to be getting longer and longer. And even the high-speed rail, right?
Absolutely. The federal and state governments in their, it would appear, in their efforts to balance their own budgets, they are taking longer to reimburse the City of Fresno, as well as other cities. Most, if not all, of our grants are reimbursement grants, which means we have to spend our money first, put in for a repayment. And it's taking longer and longer for those monies to come back to us, which means we're, we're cash flowing the federal and state governments.
But not having, you know, substantial reserve that would normally be there on short-term borrowing to cover like a 27th payroll or to cover any things that are, you know, that come up on an unforeseen basis is a problem. But this is a final question. The impact, I know on the investment pool that we use to borrow for the day-to-day operations of the city, that in the past, a lot was leaned on, on the enterprise funds that at one point in time were, were funded much better. But currently, those funds are in jeopardy of not meeting bond covenants as far as reserve requirements. And that in many ways, the, the water rate increase that we approved last August is directly related to the cash flow problems. Am I correct?
No. What, what impacted the, the ratings for the water bonds had to do with the fact that there was concern on the part of the rating agencies that the city, the general fund would raid the utilities in order to cash flow operations. And as a result, that had an impact on the utilities. Even though the utilities are very strong, they, they are meeting their debt covenants, they are maintaining, maintaining their reserves with the capital program. And I'm certain Martin can, can speak to that more. With the capital programs coming up, they need to have the revenue stream to support additional bonds that they will issue.
Right.
But as a result of being downgraded because of the concern that the general fund would raid their, their funds, it would cost them more to issue bonds now because their interest rate would be higher.
So have you seen, even though they're really separate in a sense, the enterprise versus the general fund, are you seeing the problems with the general fund credit rating sort of adversely affecting the, the ratings we're getting on water and wastewater?
Yes, it was very clear in their write-ups that that was their concern and that's why they felt that the utilities had to be downgraded slightly because of the concern that the general fund would raid those funds.
So if we improved, we, over the next five years, were able to pay all our short-term loans off, we were able to build up reserves to more reasonable levels and make an overall improvement on our finances in the general fund, then that would restore the credit rating, not only the general fund, but on the enterprise departments, which would impact the rates that people pay, correct?
Absolutely. As long as, obviously, they maintain their, their reserves and their rates and their rates to cover their costs as well.
Okay. Thank you Karen.
You're welcome.
Do we need to make a formal approval, City Attorney?
You would be making a motion to accept the report, not necessarily to approve it.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the report.
Second it.
Councilman Shong.
Thank you. Karen, you know, and I do appreciate the staff and the consultant or our team meeting with me as well. And one of the things that, my question has always been about balancing the report that we get here with, you know, with the concerns that that is going on. That part of my conversation was, we've got into the situation we had wasn't like, it was last year, it was like many, many years to where we were. And so to be realistic, saying that the City of Fresno was turned around the following year, even with all the stuff that we're doing to improve whether we're passing good management, fiscal policy, making decisions to, to build our revenues and, and take care of some of the debtors, that those weren't gonna happen the following year. So, and I want to make sure that was clear to our consultants that I understand their concerns. But I think also that the City of Fresno was moving forward and getting us into the right ship and really asking the question, what are we? I know that we compared ourselves to, to, you talk about Detroit, but then some of the different parameters in each of those areas. But in terms of where we are in California and similar cities, are we extremely, extremely low or are we like the majority of the cities that are trying to recover and putting themselves back into, into ship? So we're not way in the bottom or not even close to the top?
I can't speak directly with how we compare to other cities. We're diverse enough from other cities that in some instances were rather unique. I know all cities are struggling. Obviously, it's up to us as well as the auditor to make the evaluation. We independently evaluate our situation and then meet with the auditors to discuss where we think we are. It's based on our results, not necessarily how other cities are doing. But at the same time too, while we may be adopting policies and we may be laying out plans as to where we intend to go, before we can actually say that we're on stable financial foundation, we also have to demonstrate that we have accomplished some of those things. We need to start seeing that we, while we're saying we're going to set, create reserves, while we're saying that we're going to do some of these various different things, obviously we have to demonstrate that as well. So until that time, I mean, I don't really see us advancing to, with the going concern going away until we resolve some of these concerns and some of these issues. But again, like I said, what other cities are doing or how their auditors feel about them, I really can't speak to that.
And that's, just want to make sure, I want to make it clear, because that's, at least from my perspective, not just making policy. And I actually do believe that we are making decisions already moving towards that direction. I mean, you brought forth the water bond issue. And the second reason was that, I remember Martin Tarkin, that impacted some of the rating, was that they weren't sure if the City of Fresno was willing to, to do the water bond. Well, we proved that wrong, right? We did it. So there's determination to move us forward, understanding our, our policy. I just want to make sure that our, our residents here don't just read this one snippet and say, oh my God, we're still where we are. And that it took us 10, 15 years to where we got, to where we are here. And that the body here is taking proactive steps to moving out, to moving us out. And I believe that we've been able to demonstrate that. And so I just want to make sure that even those that are there, but there is at least, from my perspective, a balanced perspective at least, on the work that's being done and it's gonna be done to make sure that's going to be done, to make sure that we move us forward. And so, I just want to make sure that, that is clear on the dyes here, from, from my perspective, being part of that financial audit committee, and I want to thank the staff really for, for putting us in the right frame of mind to moving us forward and make sure that we address some of these issues that has happened many years prior to this, and where we are making some tough decisions during this tough economic time.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Zhang. Any other members of council like to comment? And Councilman Zhang, I think you were a second to that motion, is that right? Okay. We have a motion and a second to accept the CAFRA report. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes seven zero, six zero, excuse me. All right. Now, we are on, now we are going to skip to item J momentarily. Actions pertaining to the acquisition of CVP unreleased restoration flows.
This is Director Public Utilities, Water Division. Good afternoon, council president, council members, and city manager and staff. What we have before us is an opportunity that was presented through the dire circumstances of this, this water year. As many of you are painfully aware, there is currently a zero allocation on the San Joaquin River with a current call by the refuges and by the exchange contractors on the Friant system. Early on in this crisis, there was a negotiated agreement between the bureau and, and the water contractors and the restoration to halt some of the flows of some of the restoration releases that were scheduled for this year, and to park those restoration releases in the Fresno irrigation district, approximately 12,000 acre feet of those restoration flows, and to make those flows available to Class 1 contractors on the Friant system. There were several provisions that were a part of this agreement, so the flows were sent down the Friant Kern Canal into Fresno Irrigation District. Fresno Irrigation District parked it in their water bank, and then constructed a system that could then take some of their flows, Kings River flows that they swapped, and place those in the Friant Kern Canal for a later, a subsequent delivery over the, over the course of the season to Class 1 contractors under the provisions of this bureau agreement. That being said, the city of Fresno, as a Class 1 contractor, had about 700, slightly over 700 acre feet of water that would come out of this. This water is at a much higher rate in terms of its expense, because there is money that's going to be going to Fresno Irrigation District for operational expenses. They also had to put in a pump station and a bunch of improvements that that has to be paid for, and there are, there's monies that go back to the, to the restoration program as well as the bureau. For this reason, this small amount of water would cost probably anywhere from five to six times what we normally pay for water, and it's a very, very small amount, 712 acre feet of water, and when we're dealing, our normal contract is 60,000 acre feet. We do currently have surface water supplies that are adequate for us to operate our surface water treatment plant, and we're going to be able to do some, you know, some measure of recharge, definitely not what we normally do on, on, on a normal year, but we do have water that will be able to operate our plant and provide recharge. So, it's a small amount of water that really was at a much higher rate than what we normally pay, and there were a couple of communities that were in dire need. The two irrigation districts and communities basically were Terabella in the south and Orange Cove Irrigation District in the Fresno, in Fresno County. In conversations with the bureau and in conversations with Orange Cove, they've been along, they've actually been a partner of ours over the last several years on some, on water exchanges and transfers. We spoke to them and said, look, there's this water available, it's at a much higher price than we're normally, than, than we normally pay, and that we'd be willing to pay on behalf of our ratepayers, however, we understand that you're buying water at, you know, three times that amount, two to three times that amount, and this is a small amount that maybe be, be able to made available for you for both your community and your irrigation district to sustain yourself through this crisis. And Orange Cove expressed their appreciation and said they were willing and would be willing to pay the price. If, if we had simply foregone this, this water would have then just been re-divvied up to the other, other exchange contractor, I mean, the other Friant Class 1 contractors. A small amount would have stayed here in Fresno County, majority of it probably would have ended up flowing further south into other counties, Larry and Kern, not that we withheld it from them for that reason, but it did seem to us to be also beneficial that we were able to keep that water and, and provide it to a Fresno County community that needed it for both ag and municipal uses. So, it is our recommendation that the council approve this transfer of these waters that were made available as part of the restoration program, and that we transfer these waters to Orange Cove Irrigation District for their use in irrigation and both supporting their, their disadvantaged community, Orange Cove, and their water needs as well. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer the questions. We also have representatives, representative here, Fergus Morrissey, who's the general manager of Orange Cove Irrigation District, who, at some point in time, he may want to get up and say something, but if you have any questions regarding the irrigation district, he's here to answer those questions as well. So, thank you for your time, and I'll wait here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Martin. Any members of the public like to address this water issue with the city of Orange Cove?
I've been waiting.
All right, perfect.
So, I think Martin characterized the situation. First of all, good afternoon. Thank you for having me here. I think Martin characterized the situation pretty well. You know, this, this water is going to cost approximately $700 per acre foot, and because the agricultural, agricultural economy has no other alternative for water and a zero allocation, you know, it's either pay that cost or lose your family farm that you've had for generations. So, you know, they're willing to, to pay the cost associated with that. You know, normally, in a, in a typical water year, we pay the bureau $30 an acre foot. This is $700 an acre foot. And if you're going to use that water to put into the ground, you know, you have, you have to pay to get it back out, so you're looking at recharge water, that's probably a, you know, $1,000 an acre foot, as compared to during wet periods of time, which is, you know, 25% of the years. Hopefully, going forward, that continues to be, you know, that water's available at about $10 an acre foot delivered. So, anyway, that's just a little glimpse of the economics, and, and the district was willing to just pay all the costs, just, it's a straight, you know, we've, we've already written the checks and provided them to everybody, and so, it's, it's more or less a, a transfer of how we see it, how I see it, and I think Martin sees it as a transfer of goodwill amongst an ag and urban community where we can, in the future, potentially partner our, our various contract supplies, which are, you know, have different use curves associated with them, and by kind of melding them together, we feel that we can both become better off in the future. So, this is kind of a step towards that potentially, but obviously, you know, helps to ameliorate some of the dire economic conditions of, of no water. So, do you guys have any questions in particular?
What? Are you with the irrigation district?
Yeah, sorry, I'm Fergus Morrissey with, I'm the general manager of the Orange Cove Irrigation District.
Orange Cove Irrigation District, so, all right. I, I'm probably going to call you up for some questions in a couple of minutes then.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other members of the public like to, oh, yeah, Barbara, you turned in a card for this one, so, you're up.
People want to know how come y'all don't answer me when I be talking, they think you don't be listening, but your only answer is up to, like, you want to know something from him, you'll call him back up, and that's what you're supposed to do. I never get nobody in my district to call back up on none of these issues, because we're not represented in District 3. That's why I'm running again. Now, we, we never talk about PG&E owning all these lakes around these, all the, all these lakes for their PG&E pet projects, and all, the Friant Dam, my father worked on that Friant Dam, and that was built just for the farmers, and I'm 67 years old. I remember, he told me about this all my life. But when I see all this land that's been used for, like that bullet train man said, the city of Fresno has used 70,000 acres of land for urban development, for the development, and say the county of Fresno used 30,000 acres for development in their agriculture for purpose, taking their land away. And that man that was up here for that meeting, for that bullet train that second day, because I come up here, he says, the San Joaquin Valley, when they separate Silicon Valley, make it one state, Cali, Central Valley be another state, we're going to be worse than Mississippi was back in them old days, because everybody's going to be out here in the fields. Now, when I see Fresno State out here getting agriculture, and they're going to be training folks for agriculture, and then I see this guy up here running for governor, another guy talking about the Sharia law, and this other guy running for governor, he's talking about welfare to work, we, y'all might be little slaves out there running around, out here chopping cotton with a shorthand, whole sugar beach, because there's something bad going to happen around here, and you guys not looking at the bigger picture. Now, when I hear that Orange Cove needed some water, and the city of Fresno was willing to give them some water, yes, we should give them some water, but my trouble with that is, these people that's up here making these decisions, and them enterprise upstairs and utilities, they know work for the city of Fresno, they got their own money, they got their own budget, so why should they use our name? That money, it should say the enterprise-owned money funds, because that money is going to them, it's not going to our city of Fresno budget. Now, all that money that, what they be giving us back, and this contract should read, and like they said on the agenda, the city of Fresno, that's where that money should be going for Renee and Rooson up here, so they can put that money in our general fund, because it's not fair, because I read in the paper, Barack Obama, no, the federal government, they're going to release a whole bunch of water coming down that San Joaquin River and going to help us out. Yes, we should help our farmers, yes, we should help our neighbors, especially when you, I went to this meeting today with State Community College, they, with the number one agriculture in California, they don't say in the United States, they say California. We feeding everybody out here. Yes, we should help these farmers, don't let these urban renewal, urban development that take all our money and land and stuff, and these people up there with all the money, and we down here begging for pennies. I didn't hear my bell ring, did it ring?
Yeah, it did.
Well, you got to turn it up, because I didn't hear it. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public like to address this issue, this item? All right, then, up at council, Councilman Zhang, you're up first.
Thank you, Martin. Obviously, we're, we're pretty clearly aware of our water situation throughout the entire valley, so the zero allocation isn't something that we haven't heard across here, and its impact, whether it's east or west. So, as, as this, whether it's small or not, were, were there other water district that were considered at all in terms of this process?
Councilman, the, as I was explaining, and that's a, that's a great question, because I, there's a sensitivity around water, and so, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. The, this particular allocation of water that was set aside by the bureau had some very strict rules in terms of how it could be utilized. The, the, it was divvied up to Class 1 contractors, and you either had to take it or forego taking it, with one caveat. It could be transferred, but it could only be transferred to another Class 1 contractor within the Friant system, or another contractor within the Friant system, and only in the case of extreme need, and it could, you, there could be no, you couldn't receive any benefit. So, in other words, you couldn't make an exchange where it's a, well, it's a two-for-one, you know, you, we give you one acre foot of water and you give us two acre feet back, or, or, you know, we give it, you know, we buy it for this much, and then we make $200 profit on the exchange of that water. It basically was set up, the bureau said, look, if you're not taking the water yourself, then you can only give it away in terms of an extreme benefit. That really restricted the, the ability of transferring that water to, to other contractors, and primarily, it, it fell down to one of two contractors that were in extreme dire straits, and that was Terabella, as I said earlier, and Orange Cove, both of which had basically no, no, no water. And Terabella had made some other arrangements already, we had talked, spoken to, we, we spoke to them, but they really were, as I said, outside of the, the county, but still felt it was imperative that we talk to the, both potential districts that could be beneficiaries. And they had, they had plugged the, the real dire gaps in their, in their, in their water. It's not that they were water flush either, they're struggling, and they've been paying, they're paying a high price for water, but they had plugged their gaps. Orange Cove was still in extreme dire need, and so, it became the, the, the appropriate one, and even with that, we had to have a meeting face-to-face with the bureau, sit down with Orange Cove, the bureau, and ourselves, and run through all of the details and explain to the bureau why we should be allowed to make this transfer to Orange Cove and, and justify it, and they were, they, they did see it as a, you know, a magnanimous move on the part of the city of Fresno to be willing to take that water rather than just forego it, and then make that transfer to Orange Cove.
So, let, let me say this, obviously, the, the process that we took and, and the move that we did, I, I think that's what we should do when we have opportunities to. And I, I just want to make sure that as we do that, because I'm, I'm somewhat confused when you say extreme needs, maybe it's just, you know, the news that I hear, but when I hear extreme needs, because I've heard it from the West Side and the East Side, extreme needs is all around us. So, so I'm, I'm confused when you say that the extreme needs here, then I, I guess categorize only two places that can receive this, and that's Terabella and Orange Cove. What about, you know, in terms of other partners that we've, and I know that we've, we've done some with, with Westland in the past, some work with.
Westland's isn't a Friant contractor.
Okay, so.
So, they're disqualified from the.
So, that's what I wanted to hear, so, 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 other groups may meet the extreme needs category, correct? And, and, and we may move forward with no benefits.
Sure.
But because the other party or irrigation district does not fit into the Friant system, correct?
Correct.
That means that they are not then available.
They weren't eligible.
Eligible to participate in this effort that we're trying to help.
Correct, and Councilman, I, it, it's a, it's, it is an important point. I've had Westside farmers who have been in my office for the last probably five months, and some of them crying, I mean, because they're, they have, you know, several hundreds of acres of, of almonds that have been planted in their fourth year, can't be insured, because they haven't produced a crop yet, and there's a strong likelihood that they're going to lose, you know, several hundred million, or several tens of millions of dollars of investment, and when they lose it, they're going to have to go and see if they can bankroll that again and carry that, that cost for another four or five years before they get into, they, they get production. So, it, yeah, it, there are, there's a lot of need out there, but this was a very specific.
And I just want to make sure that that was clear.
Sure.
Because, you know, perception could be, others say, well, we have the same situation, same needs in, in our particular situation, so, you know, how come we weren't part of it, or how come we weren't engaged, or, or where was the discussion with, with other partners as well? Because the city of Fresno is fortunate in how it's set up, and we were able to, able to have access to this, what do we call it, overage, or what do we want to call it? But because the way the system is set up, the parameters that, that's allowed for us to utilize this additional resource, is that you, you had to fall into the category, the most important one, be part of that Friant system, and then out of those, we only had two alternatives that fit into those options. One of them kind of was proactive, was able to engage and, and looked like they were able to at least get something, while the other one, which is close to us, then were not, and we were able to at least approach them and be able to assist in this capacity, correct?
Correct, and I would say that, when I say dire need or extreme need, at, at the allocations we're at, everybody is, everybody is still in extreme need, so we're really talking about the difference between zero and something.
Right.
Whereas in other cases, it wasn't zero and something, is they had something, and it would have been a little bit more. In the case of Orange Cove, it was zero to something, so pretty significant.
Just a clarification on that point, I, I thought that there was zero allocation in the West Side, too. Do we, was there a change in that at this particular point?
In what regard?
Into water?
On the West Side?
Yeah, I thought there was zero allocation at this particular point the last time.
There is zero allocation of water to the Friant, to Friant contractors off of the San Joaquin River.
Okay.
The West Side is a little more complicated in that there are a couple of different types of contractors on the West Side. There is a zero allocation to supplemental contractors, Westland's, for example. Exchange contractors are getting a, a reduced allocation out of the delta, and that's why the exchange contractors are getting the allocation, or some allocation right now. The bureau has made an allocation out of the Friant.
No, thank you very much, I appreciate the clarification on, on that, Martin, and a great job in, in giving us an opportunity to, to help our sister cities in, in any way that we can, in terms of this particular difficult situation that we're all facing.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Yes, I'm next, actually. So, I'm, I'm a, just a little clarification for myself, too, I want to echo some of the sentiment of my colleague, Councilmember Zhang. of my colleague, Councilmember Jeong, and feeling as though, when we have the opportunity to do these types of things, we should, I want to, I certainly agree with that. But I want to, I want to clarify a couple of things, and you said it, but I want to make sure I understand correctly. The 710 acre feet that, that we have, and these unreleased restoration flows, I guess that's what they are, that's all we have of the 60,000 acre feet that we're normally allotted?
Currently, we have zero of the 60,000 acre feet.
Okay.
This is, this was flow, these were flows that were allocated to run for the restoration, in other words, they were gonna flood on the river to establish river flow. And there was a conversation around, really, are we gonna, are we going to just release these flows in this kind of a year when there is no water on the west side? So there was agreement, so that's why they're called unreleased restoration flows. These were held behind the dam, and so what they said was, hey, rather than just letting these unreleased flows that are behind the dam flow down the river, we're gonna divert those in the Friant current canal, send them down to the Fresno Irrigation District, and make them available to the Friant system. So every Class 1 contractor in the class, in terms of our Class 1 San Joaquin contracts, that allocation is zero. So this is a totally different class of water that was reserved for restoration flows behind the dam, that through a negotiated agreement, they made available, the Bureau made it available as an, as an, you know, I don't know how, it was unreleased, they just said, hey, we're not gonna, we agree, we're not just gonna let it flood on the river, we'll make that available to you. So it's separate from our contracts.
And this is something that doesn't happen annually, so this is, this type of agreement and negotiation is, in and of itself, it's unique.
This would not happen normally, normally, these would've flowed down the river as restoration flows.
Okay.
Yep, they're separate from our class, our class contracts.
Okay. And I'm fairly comfortable with the fact that the Water Division is comfortable, that we don't have a need for the 710 acre feet, I don't even know, that wouldn't get us very far anyway, in the grand scheme of things, with the needs that we have yearly, or annually. But if we did not give this water to the, it would sound like there are only two eligible entities, we would just, the water would be lost and it would go somewhere else?
The water would go somewhere else.
Where would it go?
It would go to the other, it would be reapportioned among the contractors that had expressed an interest in taking the water. So if Fresno said, you know, we're not gonna do it, we're gonna pass, then they would take that 710 or whatever, it ends up being 710 acre feet of water, and they would've just reapportioned it among the contractors that said, yeah, we'll pay, we'll pay that price and we'll take it.
Okay, that's what I thought you said.
It would've increased their price a little bit, they would've paid a little bit more instead of, you know, 600, they'd pay $620 an acre foot, because now they'd have to pay for a portion of our portion, but they would, they would get that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that, I thought I heard you say that as well. And just obviously, you know, my sensitivity to, of course, what the west side, like Councilmember Jeong's, we have a lot of farmers in the western part of our county too that are, that are needing help, is there anything that we've contemplated to do for them that are within our scope?
As I've been telling them when they've come in, you know, I am sensitive to their plight, you know, I have a family that's farmed for over 100 years in the Kingsburg area. I understand what it means to have water and not have water, you know, basically farming is legalized gambling, you know, every year you're gambling that everything's gonna turn out well and you're actually gonna make some money that year. And so I understand their plight, and I, if you'd been in my office and seen some of the emotional reactions of them as they're, you know, losing their livelihood, their future, but as I've told them, there's, we, there's not water in the system to make a deal, you know, even if, even if everything worked out right and we were going to, we could put it all together, there's nothing in the system right now, with the allocations we've been given, there's nothing in the system to make a deal. And this water was a very unique set of water, and I would say something, this, and I want to, I want to caveat the, the words in regards to, we need water, everybody, we still have needs, I would not, I would not say that we don't need, need the water. Everybody right now with where we're at doesn't, is not, doesn't have enough, in terms of, hey, if we were gonna try to do everything we wanted to do. But my, my point in that, and I'll make sure we're clear, is that we have water in our current allocations to operate our infrastructure. If we had the additional water, we would be putting it in recharge, we'd be paying six times as much for the water, and I think it was put well by Fergus Morrisey, we'd put that water in recharge basins and we'd percolate it, losing about 10% of it to evaporation, and then we'd pump that back out of the ground. And in years where we have that available water, we're gonna do that, and that's a good thing to do. But in a year where people are losing their farms and communities don't have enough water to drink, we have the water available, we have the resources available to be able to make our way through this and limp through this, and that's what I will, I would say we're, we are doing, in the sense that we're gonna extract groundwater, and we've made that point that we've been doing that too long, but this is an extenuating, an extreme circumstance, and I believe it is a commendable thing that both the administration got behind and the city manager's office, and that you would be facilitating by voting yes.
And I guess my final question is, just curiously, why, why does it cost so much more for, you said like something like seven times more for this water? Why is it so much more expensive?
It's more expensive because, one, this water was restoration flows, so this water was supposed to flow down the river. So one of the things they said was, look, if we're not gonna send it down the river for restoration, then it needs to provide some benefit, that if the water's not providing a benefit, there needs to be some benefit to the restoration program. So in essence, there needs to be some revenue that's generated for that. Two, there's a cost in terms of the operations for, for FID. FID has to take that water, bank it, use it in their facilities, put it away, then they had to build and construct a pumping station, there's a cost of that pumping station, they have to put it in the canal and deliver it, so there's all the delivery costs as well. So the Bureau had costs, FID had costs. If the costs turn out to be more excessive than what was in the plan, in the, in the contract, those costs, the allocation, I believe, is 120 that was going to the Bureau, those costs could shrink to nothing, and those, the costs on the top end depends on what the costs of delivery actually end up being. So there's not really a top end, but there is a, a limited benefit, so, so it's all the movement of that water that costs the money.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Also, in Capriolio.
Thank you. Martin, you've eloquently explained the lack of options with this water. In the vein that Ms. Hunt brought up on being physically, physically conservative, will this have any impact on the city of Fresno's general fund?
It won't have any impact on the general fund or our enterprise fund, it's a pass-through. So, and that was the way the thing was set up, you couldn't make any money on it, but they, but Orange Cove is covering all of our costs on it, so it's just a pass-through. We pay the Bureau for the water, the water gets pumped and they pay us back. In essence, what, we arranged it a different way, Orange Cove will pay directly for the water on our behalf, so.
So zero impact on our, our budget?
Yeah, it's strictly a pass-through.
Thank you.
Both the water and the funds.
I would make a motion to approve item J as listed in our agenda, and the last comment I'd make is, I think this is, thank you for being here for Orange Cove, this is another example of how the city of Fresno cooperates with other cities in the county of Fresno, not just Clovis, but Orange Cove and anyone else that we come into contact with. I think in an overall basis, this benefits the county of Fresno, and we all must work together, and I hope we can have a meeting with the county of Fresno sooner than later. Thank you.
Sure. And I would say, I want to add something, because, you know, it doesn't get said very often, and this is an opportunity, I'm gonna close out, I know I have a yes, but, no, I'm not gonna not say it. I want to compliment George Ann on, she's, since we joined the Water Authority, she's been at the meetings and been representing us on that, on water issues and stuff, and I know it's on behalf of the mayor, but at the same time, sometimes there needs to be a word said where a word's due, and even in this deal, she's been a tremendous, she's a, she really is a tremendous asset to the city, so my compliments in that way also.
Councilman Brand.
Thank you for, you've answered a lot of the questions I was gonna ask. You know, we have property in Orange Cove, of tax return property, to give you guys an indication of how devastated that community is, is most of the growers there, probably many have taken, you know, probably hundreds of acres off of production. What that does is it lays off people, and the complex we manage, the affordable housing, most of those people are farm workers and most of them are unemployed now. And I think they're down to, like, watering one day a week, because I think it's really, really bad, so this, this in a way is almost like a humanitarian effort from one city to the other, you know, to show that, you know, and again, Mr. Baines made it clear that this is not water that would go someplace else as far as a city, but I think it's good that we, you know, as an example, we can work together with other cities and the county in resolving this just terrible issue that is devastating the San Joaquin Valley right now, so, thanks for all your efforts too, Martin. And I'll second Paul's motion.
All right, screen is clear. Okay, you'll go after me, all right, I'll just make a real short one then. It's very interesting, I appreciate Councilman Jeong's comments, actually, showing concern, you know, concern, what, don't just give away water ever, really, but this is, this is a special, a special time. I was at the press conference earlier today that the mayor held next door, and the mayor of Orange Cove was there, and he considers this, in Fresno size, it's a small amount of water, but to the crisis that they're facing, Mayor Jimenez said it was, it's an answer to their prayers. So the way I look at this is, it's like a family, it's, we're in a family, and thank you, Councilman Capriolio, also for mentioning it's a family that belongs to Fresno County, these are in our own county, and they're struggling along with us, but they're out there, they're at the very forefront of the, of the crisis, and to me, it's like your youngest brother, it's the real small kid in the family, when there's, there's a shortage of food, you want to make sure he gets that extra sandwich. So that's really the way I feel about it, and I, and I feel really good about us giving some water to Orange Cove, and so I appreciate the work by the administration, and so that's my final comment. Councilman Quintero.
Martin, I got a couple of questions. Okay, so we have this additional water that we don't need.
I never said that.
Okay. That's what it's sounding like, that we can't, can't use this year, okay? Right?
I said, I said, actually, we have enough water to, to operate our treatment plant, and we will have water for our recharge facilities, this is additional water that was coming to us through a program at a, at a much higher price to our ratepayers, and what we would do with that very expensive water is we would place it in a recharge basin and percolate it, losing about 10, 10% of evaporation, it just didn't make econ, it's not good, sound business or economic sense.
Okay. You had mentioned the Fresno Irrigation District earlier, and that's who you would deal with, have you met, did you meet with them as well?
Yeah, I've spoken to Gary about this. Gary, right when the water was available, Gary Serrato, the general manager of Fresno Irrigation District, suggested that we pay for this water and take it.
Uh-huh. What was the reasoning for that?
Because it would be a bad business decision on our part.
On the city's part?
Yeah, it would benefit them, but it would be a bad business decision on our part.
Now, do we also have the ability if, to give the water back to the Bureau of Reclamation for them to allocate out, to make the decision?
We could have, we could have, yes, Councilman, we could have foregone the, the allocation and returned it back to the Bureau, and it would've been redistributed among the other, the other contractors.
Why didn't we do that?
Because, several reasons, one, it would've just been a small amount added to their amounts, so that's one thing. A second thing is, we recognized that Orange Cove and Terabella were in dire need, and we're paying an ex, much higher amount. I think they've even bought water, I'm not sure of the price, $1,200? They actually paid FID $1,500, so FID sold them water at $1,500, while we're instead giving them water at 600. So it really was about us doing a, a very disadvantaged and distressed community, providing a benefit to them at a time when they're, they're sorely disadvantaged and not taking advantage of the fact that-
So it basically is a savings for the Orange Cove Water District then, in terms of getting it from us?
It didn't make sense for us, and it totally made sense for them.
Okay, yeah, all right, that's what I needed, and then the other, the other part, it says, the estimated cost to the city under the Bureau agreement and reimbursement to the city under the agreement is approximately $413,000?
For, oh, the cost of, the price of the water, correct? That's what-
The OCID agreement will provide a simple, single-year transfer of the city's portion of the unreleased restoration flows-
Correct.
And full reimbursement to the city of all costs associated with the water supply transfer. And the estimated cost to the city under the Bureau agreement and reimbursement to the city under the OCID agreement is approximately, figure, around figures, $414,000?
Correct.
So that's, that money will be coming to the city and it's basically a wash for us then?
Basically, what had to happen, the timeline on this was such that OCID had to put up the check, so OCID has actually paid directly for that water, we will not pay for it, they'll pay it directly, so there'll be no, there'll be no exchange of money.
Okay.
They've already put up the check for the money. So it's, technically, it's a reimbursement, but in reality, they just paid, they paid the cost.
You know, I, I know I'm mixing apples and oranges when, you know, when I say that here we have residents that are, that are, you know, really concerned about the, our water rate increases for, for, you know, the water that they're gonna use, and then the workshop that we had about approving a water treatment plant and that type of thing, and, I mean, just, it's kind of like a bad taste in their mouth, they go, gee, we got all this water, why, why are we having to get rate increases? And I know it's mixing apples and oranges, but I mean, just-
Well, the good thing about it is, I mean, it should be recognized that this would be paying, like I said, six times as much for the water, so-
Yeah, I know.
It just shows that we're, actually, we are extremely responsible with the, with the finances of our ratepayers, and, and we don't want to waste their money on an, on an effort that's not in their best interest in this case.
Yeah.
That's what this would be. So this water, as I said, we have enough for our current surface water treatment plant, if we had another surface water treatment plant, and this was that 80 million gallon plant, and this was 80 million gallons of water, or whatever portion, we wouldn't be foregoing it, but right now, it's, it seems more important to save those, those trees, that, those crops, those jobs, that community, than to put 700 acre feet of expensive water in a, in a, in a basin.
Okay, thank you.
All right, screen is clear, we have a motion in a second to, to go with a staff recommendation on this item, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. That's correct. All right, now we are on to item C. What's that?
You got it right.
Now we are on to, item 2C in General Admin, reallocating $700,000 from the property liability self-insurance contingency to refunds and claims, and that's Personnel Services Department. Jeff.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council, Jeff Cardell, Personnel Services Director, and yes, as you've indicated, this is a resolution seeking reallocation of our contingency funds in our liability and property. We anticipate that we need approximately $700,000 in order to pay the remainder of the claims and attorney's fees for the balance of the year. This is a relatively routine item, we've come to you before in years past, and we set aside these contingency funds because we do not know exactly what our claims experience will be. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any members of the public like to comment on this item?
Steve Ralston, at 1:05.
We're on item 2C, it's about reallocating funds.
Can we back this 700,000 reallocating funds? This is how they get away with a lot of our money, moving around. And the property tax, we self-insure, we insure everybody ourselves, just like that pension obligation bond, they've won all that 200-some thousand dollars and then we ran the city hall off of that money for a long time. And now that's why them guys getting a whole bunch of money for their pensions. This 700,000 for property taxes liability and all that self-insurance contingency account to refund claims, the council and outside legal service, what are those claims, council and the legal services? I don't see anything about here on my agenda that tell me what they paying that money for. Anybody can say, I have a count over here, legal obligation, they bring it here and you guys approve it. I know you got a paper over there, but it don't go off into details. But you know what, and this is the Personal, Personal Service Department, since when did Personnel Service Department get to come out here and make some kind of, ask for money? I thought that was for the City of Fresno and I thought it was for the Water Department, Utility Department, Code Enforcement or somebody like that, but we got this Personnel Department coming down here asking for money, same thing. I don't understand how these people come down here with these different names that don't have a qualification to even be up in there and they just an employee of you and then they ask for a lot of money, they bring it to you and you approve it. This don't make sense to me. Use your judgment. I say don't give them nothing unless the city council bring it forward, the, the mayor bring it forward, since we privatized all them departments up there, the franchise up there, the Development Department and all those Public Works Departments, all them capital improvement projects in the back of y'all, in back of y'all budget books, the whole, all y'all money goes to them capital improvement projects in the back of those budget books. So y'all approve anything. It don't, I don't know why we got you guys up in there. Don't make no sense. You approve anything. But what's right for the people? You don't do what's right for the people. They elect you guys, y'all be out there putting up signs, running around, doing everything. Once you get up in here, you don't do nothing, but sit there and think about it. Keep on, God gonna take care of all this here, y'all just little pheasants. So I'm saying, God, in the name of Jesus, whatever decision they do with y'all money, let it come out their pocket at the end, because rapture gonna come pretty soon. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public like to comment on this item? All right, up here at council, any members of council like to comment? We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 6-0. Now we are on to item D. A resolution to grant applications for up to 1.25 million dollars to the State of California Department of Transportation. That's our Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members and colleagues, Scott Mosier, Public Works Director. First want to mention, this is a joint item for Public Works and the Parks Department and it concerns the new active transportation program at the state level. This is really not new money, but it's kind of a roll-up of three former programs that I know the council is familiar with. Safe routes to school, that's done a number of sidewalk projects, traffic signals and such throughout the community in years past, the bicycle transportation account, and then the old transportation enhancements where, again, brought a lot of benefits to the community over the years. We have a list of four projects, three, three under Public Works and one in Parks, and we have staff available to answer any questions. We have a sidewalk project in southwest Fresno around Columbia Elementary, two bike lane projects, and we also have a non-infrastructure application which would provide pedestrian and bicycle safety education programs at schools and community centers around the community. So staff would recommend approval and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Any members of the public like to comment on item D? No? Fantastic. Up here at council, any council members?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes 6-0. All right, on to item E, actions pertaining to an award of construction contract to California Building Evaluation and Construction. And, it's also Public Works.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council Members, my name's Debbie Bernard, Project Manager for the Department of Public Works. I'm here to request that council award a construction contract to California Building Evaluation and Construction Incorporated of Buena Park, California, in the amount of $736,360 as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder for the emergency generator upgrade at Fresno City Hall. This project will replace the existing 200 kilowatt City Hall emergency generator with a 500 kilowatt emergency generator that will provide power, temporary power to support all lighting, data and cooling and heating equipment within ISD for at least 48 hours if there should be a PG&E power failure. We did receive a bid appeal and proceeded through the appeals process per Resolution 2003-129 and the independent hearing officer upheld staff's recommendation. Therefore, once again, staff requests that council award a construction contract to California Building Evaluation and Construction, Inc., of Buena Park, California, in the amount of $736,360 to construct the emergency generator upgrade at Fresno City Hall and adopt a finding of categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301 existing facilities within the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA guidelines. Staff has determined that none of the exceptions to categorical exemptions set forth in the SEQA guidelines applied to this project. Staff will be here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Any members of the public like to comment on this item? E.
I don't keep, you guys giving me a parking ticket. I don't see a P down here.
Oh, E.
Huh? True, E. Okay, that's right here. Okay. Adoption pertaining to an award of a construction contract to California Building Evaluation and Construction Incorporated-
Do I have a couple of questions?
-Buena Park, California, in amount of $736,360 for the emergency generator at the Fresno City Hall. We finally doing something for ourselves. Yes, we need a generator. How did it, it's hot outside now. Yes, we need that generator. We gotta do something for City Hall. We used to be leasing this building, we ought to own this thing by now. Council District Public, see this Public Works, that's the people who supposed to ask for things. But then it says exemption per staff determination pursuant to Section 1530C of the SEQA guidelines. So what we're doing, we're gonna take the money from SEQA and get this generator, you take it from everybody else, yes, you gotta do something for yourself, we need a generator, a backup, in case it be a fire run around here, you can keep this place going. Thank you.
Councilman Quintero.
Debbie? Got some questions. The, you know, one of the, the things that, that I look at in these things is the, the local companies that bid, and I see that the company that, that came in with the lowest bid is from Buena Park.
Correct.
The fourth lowest bid is from Fresno, and it was a, it was a round figures 12,600 difference. Now, we, can you explain a little bit about the local preference?
The local preference can only be applied to one-half of 1% of the lowest bidder's amount, or maximum of $1,000. And with the next two is lowest, next two lowest bidders being also from not local areas, one's from Sacramento, one's from Southern California, they were both over $1,000 higher than building exchange, building evaluation and construction. And therefore, the fourth one was much more than $1,000.
Was there other criteria that we use in, in local preference?
The only criteria is the one-half of 1%.
I thought we had adjusted those sometime back or, or taken some other things into consideration?
Is it 1%? It's 1%, I'm sorry, 1% of the total bid amount. And that's, that's the only criteria there is. Up to $1,000.
And, well, the other thing, it says, I mean, the, okay, the difference is 12,600 round figures, but also says it, it doesn't have any impact on the general fund?
There, it's from-
Yeah, it's from the revenue lease bonds?
The revenue lease bonds.
Um, I mean, isn't there something else we can do to, to try and help our local companies, other, like reject all bids and?
Go back out?
Yeah.
Um, this has been a, a hot item to get out to construction. I don't know...
Councilmember, generally speaking, if we would reject the bids and go back out, we'd probably have an appeal from the low bidder once again, but-
We'd probably would, Robert?
We probably would have an appeal for rejecting the bids. We wouldn't have any reason to do so since we already found them to be responsible and responsive. However, what usually happens when we have to rebid projects, in my opinion, and in my personal experience, is that the next bid always is higher. So we'll probably end up spending more money the next time around. It never comes in cheaper.
Well, I saw that the, the number two company appealed it and was, their appeal was rejected.
That's correct. The number, actually, the number two company appealed for the fact that the number one company claimed that, or the number one company used a, a person within their, their town to be their sub. And that sub was of, in the same company as the gentleman that who appealed it. And basically, it was a, it was a dispute between branches of the same company is what the, the bid appeal was based upon.
Okay. And, and Robert, the criteria that we use for local preference, is that the percentages, are they pretty similar to what other cities use for?
You know, that I, that I don't know. I think the purchasing manager or someone should be able to answer that, I'm not even sure if there's anyone here that can. But, that's the guideline that's been set forth by council, I believe.
Uh huh.
It's, I think it is and must be in a, a policy or the municipal code, one of the two.
As Mr. Anderson has pointed out, the, the local preference parameters were set by council years ago. The item before you right now is, is needed because in large part, during the summer, we have had a number of failures, for whatever reason, and this building, when this building loses power, not only do we lose operational capacity within the building, we also have the, the threat of losing a lot of the computer servers in the first floor that support all of our business practices. There is no redundancy in our, our system. And to give you an idea of what will happen is one server is probably worth about, and I see Brian's, about $45,000 to replace one server. And we had a situation last year, and we've had one almost every year that I can recall over the last three to four years, where we're bringing in fans, emergency cooling towers, et cetera, et cetera, in order to keep that server room from overheating and losing service. And in some cases, we have lost servers. So while I appreciate the concern over the $12,000, it is in a lot of ways well-spent in order to mitigate the impacts of what may very well be a long, hot summer.
Well, I know we had a discussion on local preference a few years back on purchasing of vehicles, you know, and, and doing a local preference on, you know, the bids from the local dealerships and that type of thing, so. City attorneys, are, anything we can look at?
Well, here, the local preference wouldn't apply because the difference in bids was greater than the local preference would allow an adjustment.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Councilman Brand.
So we have a generator right now, this is an upgrade, correct? Or anybody?
This is an up-
Go ahead, Robert.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm sorry, what was question?
So we have, we have a generator now, this is an upgrade.
We have a generator now, but it's a capacity issue. Right now, that the existing generator won't keep the, the server room cool, which is really what the focus of this project is going to do.
So would this replace it or augment it?
I believe it's replacing it.
Okay, the capacity?
Yeah.
Okay. Would go up to 48 hours, right?
That's correct.
And then you said, I, I, the question was, how many times a year, were you saying, is it in the summertime and all the peak demand? How many times a year does that happen?
The last four years, I would say at least four or five times.
Okay. I mean, I've been in there with hauling in fans myself from, from the fleet shop just to get enough air movement in there to keep these servers from failing. And in order to protect the servers, we have actually shut systems down in order to make sure that we don't lose the server, but within that, you lose additional capacity.
The servers are on the first floor?
First floor.
First floor.
And we have no redundancy.
Okay. And, so the consequences of not upgrading would be, in the event of a, of a longer than, I guess, 24, 48-hour power failure or 110 degrees outside, then you could have, lose the servers, lose data. What would be the cost to replace that?
Well, like I said, you could lose it, you could lose a server, a server, one server by itself is 40 to 45,000 dollars.
Right. What about the data?
Data, which is why we shut down the servers, is so that we don't lose the data.
Okay. I know we recently upgraded on Microsoft, was it Windows 7? Right. That, is the migration completed?
They're in the process of that right now, yes.
So have you, has the city explored cloud-based backup?
There's a lot of rules. I, I do not know, ISD would have to answer that, but there's a, I know there's a lot of rules on proprietary information and, and, and data we do not wish to have out on the cloud, there's a-
Right.
That's a big part of it.
Because really, I mean, I, I know in the private sector, most companies are going to, you know, cloud-based or web-based servers and, and, and data backups. And I'm not, city attorney, could you, you know, maybe you can comment on, is there a legal restriction about having, you know, public information, data on a cloud-based, you know, backup that you, that prevents that from happening or puts limits on that?
I don't know, we've never been asked that, we'd have to do some research on it.
Okay, well, I, I think we need to research that, not only for this one, but, because we could, you know, replace a $40,000 server, but if it took, you know, a team of 10 people three months to recover all the data, you could calculate the cost, that would be far greater, right?
I would think so. I'm not sure if we do have backup capacity right now, we probably do. I think this project was mostly for saving the servers and keeping them from having to be replaced.
I understand that, but I'm just thinking of the, the larger, you know, issue here is, you know, losing data.
Right. And then, I'm pretty sure the data is backed up and probably on a daily basis, I just don't know the machinations for that. That was something that, but something that Carolyn Hogg would probably need to answer.
Oh, could I request then?
We, we'll have the ISD Department provide you a, or the council with a white paper on the options to begin to start storing on, on the cloud base.
Okay. So really, it's two issues here.
Right. It's a remote, the redundancy of the ability to store this information on a remote server.
And, the other question is on the, the cost estimate, where it adds 139,500 for indirect cost. And, that includes $40,000 for project management and inspection?
Yes.
That, I mean, it's on the surface, that's just one generator, right?
It's the removal of the existing generator and running all the cables and, and wirework through the first floor of City Hall above the ceilings, as well as installing the new generator.
Yeah, and the, the mechanics are going and making the-
Right, but the inspectors are there to verify that it's done per plans and specs.
So you believe that's a reasonable figure?
Yeah, for this size of a project, yes.
Okay, based on standards- Okay, based on standards that we use?
Based on the, the hourly budget that we use.
Okay, so do you have a, a more detailed breakout of why those, how you calculated those costs then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, and it's roughly 736, right, is the?
Is the contract amount, correct?
The overhead. And one more question on the, the local preference. Is that, that limited, is that 500,000 the cap on that as well as the, the 1%? Is there?
It's 1,000.
Correct?
It, it's 1,000. I, um...
No, no, the, the cap as far as bids, in other words, any, if we're bidding out something for $10 million, I don't even think it, it applies.
The cap is $1,000. It's 1% of the, up to $1,000? I'm pretty positive. Yes.
But that's not it. There's no cap on the particular project.
Oh, yeah, there's no...
So in other words?
It would, it could, it can apply to any project, basically, using local monies. But it does not apply to is the federal or state, since they have regulations that we cannot use a local preference to change the bid.
Okay, for some reason, I thought the, there was a, that any, 500,000 was the limit on, anything above 500,000, it didn't apply. But you're saying if it's $10 million?
Councilmember Brand, yes, the limit is one half of 1%, up to $1,000.
Okay, that's fine.
So that means that 500,000, there's no further benefit beyond that.
Okay, okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Councilman Olivier.
Thank you. So we've determined that the thing is, the power's gone out five times in the last year. How many times has it, the power been off for longer than, a period longer than 48 hours?
About twice. Usually, it's like a four to six hour, maybe eight hour outage, but it's been out at least twice in the last year over 48 hours.
How did we, how did the systems and the equipment survive?
We lost some drives. We lost some, some equipment. We had to replace it. Some of it was under warranty, some of it wasn't.
At a cost of?
Um, I'd have to go back and look, but the one, the stuff that was under warranty didn't cost us anything. But the other equipment, I'd have to go back and take a look at how much it cost us. But Bruce is right, servers are 45 to $50,000 because we virtualize and put a lot of resources on them.
But those did not go out of service?
Uh, some of the hard drives did. Um, we, what we do...
I'm, I'm computer illiterate, and I don't really know the difference between a server and a hard drive.
My, my, my apologies. A hard drive is the storage piece inside of the box, which is the server. Okay? But what we do in, in, with the emergency situations is like Bruce says, we turn down all the equipment that we consider non-essential and leave the essential equipment up, like, you know, PeopleSoft and payroll and whatnot and email, until the point where the server room gets too hot. Then we have to bring those down as well. And it takes, it takes about two to three hours for the, the server room to get very hot to where we have to turn these down. We made some improvements in there with the high-dial containment a couple of years ago, which helped, but we still end up turning essential services down. So then we have to send employees home.
Brian, if I could, it's not just the employees in this building that are impacted. It is employees throughout the city organization.
Yes.
Because the network is housed in this building. So when he talks about losing email and PeopleSoft, you want, you want an emergency, have an electrical failure on a payday or a day before a payday and telling 3,500 or 3,300 employees that we're not going to be able to cut your check today because we lost a server yesterday afternoon, and we won't be back up for two days.
Has that ever happened before?
It hasn't because we haven't had a, a failure occur before a pay period.
Right.
Or before a check room. That's what I'm saying. You have city operations, and, and I can't explain why there isn't any redundancy, but everything that we do, and I don't want to get this out too far, but everything we do is literally housed on the first floor of this building.
Was there a, a lower cost alternative? And I, I don't want to sound ignorant, but I mean, are there things on the used market that we could purchase used and, and do this at a savings?
Well, we, we, we do everything we can to save costs. If we can, we, we, you know, but buying something on, on a second, second hand is, a lot of times, there's already used, you know, time into that piece of equipment to where it's already halfway used, so that you might as well buy something that's newer, so it lasts you just as long, if not longer. I hope I'm explaining myself correctly.
Yes, and you've been very helpful. Thank you.
Um, the only other, the other thing that should be noted is there are connections through City Hall that allow us to connect to other agencies, City of Clovis, County of Fresno. And so if power goes out in, in the computer room, we also lose some of the connectivity to the other agencies, as well as public safety and, and some of the dispatch.
Thank you. And I, I guess the, the next question is, what else could we use the, the money for? Or could we just not spend it? Or where would the money go if, if this council decided to, that it wasn't the right time?
Yeah, it, these are bond proceeds. We would have to declare that all the projects are completed, that were originally for the basis of the bond. We're talking about one of the projects that was the basis of the bond, council determines.
We'd have to look into the...
Into the implications of that, but one alternate may, with underlying may, is that you just use it to pay the, the debt service.
Can, can we put, can we kick this forward and find out if we could use it to, to pay the debt service on it? Or, I mean, I don't, I, maybe I'll listen to what my council colleagues have to say, and then before we make any kind of decision. So, I'm finished. Thank you. I, I'm just concerned about, concerned about the money, that's all.
Councilman Baines.
Yeah, you're up, Oliver.
Okay, well, sorry about that. I was discussing with the city attorney how we would change our code. But I, I don't have any, I don't have any further, further questions. But, yeah, I, I, I'm concerned, as Sal is, about the fact that we have a local, local company that's $12,000 away from a, you know, pretty sizable bid, and we can't figure out a way to, to keep, you know, $700,000 in the, really flowing through the City of Fresno. So that, of course, always concerns me. So anyway, we're going to have to do something about that. But I don't have any further comments.
Councilman Capriolio.
Thank you. So we have questions about the debt service, data backup, and then for me, is there an alternative backup that's less expensive, that more duck work in that room, make it a priority room if we do have some sort of failure over 12 hours or 20 hours?
I think this was the alternative. There was a generator study performed for the City Hall, and the study concluded that we needed an additional 350 kilowatts to earn our, our current emergency generator, to provide the services to ISD that they require so that we don't lose all of the work that everyone within the city does and that the servers don't go down. Now, to save money, instead of purchasing another generator and running two, to ISD and, and running two generators side by side, it was decided to do the 500-kilowatt generator and replace the existing one, which is, I, I'm not quite sure how many years old it is, but I imagine it's, it's served its life.
So there's, there's no other, it seems to me that the main generator seems to be doing a good job except two to four times a year. And it seems like it could be a little bit more cost-effective with a backup to that generator rather than buying the Cadillac of generators, so to speak.
This isn't the Cadillac of generators. This is what's required to prevent the catastrophes in the ISD department that we're talking about. The minimum requirement was 500 kilowatts, according to the study that was performed, that, that council awarded a consultant agreement to, to perform this study. So I don't know if there's another alternative for this.
Thank you.
Councilman Brand.
City manager, I just want to clarify again. If this money's from a lease revenue bond, so if we didn't spend 800,000 on this, what else, again, what are the other categories that?
We, we would pay the debt.
Okay. Also, you said it's like $40,000 a server?
It's $40,000 a server, and I just confirmed with the Public Works Director, this, we're also talking about a generator that's probably 15, if not 18 years old. So if you look at the lifecycle cost of this generator, it's pretty much getting close to the end of its lifecycle. So, like, we've done a lot of things around here. Instead of replacing it when it does fail, we're trying to replace it before it does fail, and we're needing to upgrade it because of the additional loads that have been created by the fact that we all do everything with computers now.
How many, what's the capacity of the current generator? Is it wattage-wise? Two, okay, so we're more than doubling the capacity?
Yes.
So...
The existing one's 200 kilowatts.
What would it cost, I'm just out of curiosity, to replace a 200-watt generator? Half the cost?
I, I don't know what the cost is. The construction cost might be, would be the same amount, other than the actual purchase price of the generator.
Right.
And I, I don't have the...
Okay, so, I mean, that's the difference. And you're saying this, this is on its last legs right now, the current generator?
18 years old for a generator, yes.
You want to wait for it to just fail?
Yeah, and I, I understand the city manager's concern that if this wasn't a payroll or a, or a run for accounts payable, that would be a lot of upset people out there for a few days. You know, I guess my point is, it would be great if we had a reserve or a depreciation fund, that we would just have these assets replaced as they get to the end of their lifecycle. In fact, I think there was an item on the agenda already, talked about replacing the things at the end of their life. But like everything else around here, we don't have that, so we issued a bond, which is essentially, we got, got the credit card out in anticipation of replacing an asset that's at the end of its life. And we want to replace it, one, because it is at the end of its life, and two, because of the additional loads on this building created by the fact that we've gone to virtual everything, it is prudent, in my opinion, that we replace this generator because of its age and because we need the additional capacity to support the building and the bill, and the operations of this organization.
Counsel, if I may, Scott Moser, Public Works, just wanted to add, when the bid appeal first came in, that did cause a delay of some weeks in being able to be here before you recommending an award. And during that period, I received multiple emails from our ISD director, Carolyn Hogg, again, with extreme concern about needing to go into another summer with the situation we have. Again, hopefully, it came out, and, and what you've heard from staff, that when the power does go out, that due to the servers in the hot aisle, that the temperature rises very, very quickly in that area. And we do not always necessarily know the heat in that area, and especially if that occurs at night. We had a recent incident where we were dependent upon our security to notify us that that occurred. So there's a lot, a lot playing into it. And Carolyn's extremely concerned about the time sensitivity of, of the item. So, you know, we're ready to go. We can, we can make this one happen, you know, from just a construction, construction management standpoint. And that's the best recommendation from, from ISD and the consultants who've looked at it for the, for the power and the generator system. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. You know, this illustrates, you know, we were meeting earlier this week with the convention center on the oversight board about all the stuff they need. This entire city, over the last 10 years, we have a laundry list of items from, you know, cars, equipment, buildings, HVACs, you know, generators that, where do you start? I don't know. It just... So there's, you know, we're going to have this debate forever. You know, it's never going to be, we're never going to have the money to do everything. And so I guess it's, whatever breaks down first gets, gets taken care of. Like, that's the only methodology I can think of. But I know this is, again, unrelated, but having software, proprietary software that's web-based, you know, you're not, you're taking away the importance on the local server and you're, you know, it's, and again, subject to whatever the city attorney comes up with on his review, it's something that should be explored in the future, one way or the other. Because I think all the new, most businesses are going that direction and cloud-based on the, or on the data back, backup. And then the other issue that we've really hit upon today is, is the local preference issue. And I remember a couple of years ago, I, I know we, this was discussed at the council, and you mentioned the 1%, 1,000. Is there any, is there a limit that we have? We can't go above a certain amount of money, city attorney? On local, in other words, could we say, we'll make a 10% up to a million dollars? Are there legal restrictions on what we can do?
We're just, we were just talking about that. I'm not aware of any. At some point, there could be some kind of due process issue for too great a disparity, but we're looking into it. We're not aware of any right now.
Yeah, because as I recall the conversation we had, I think Member Zhang was here at the time, that, that was an issue that brought up. But, you know, then there's this dilemma of, you know, we represent the taxpayers, we give them the best deal. But, you know, when you're really close and you got a local, you know, manufacturer, employer, who's bringing local people, you know, there's a ripple effect, you know, not that an out-of-town company wouldn't bring in local people, but I think in a project like that, this, they'd probably bring in their own people. But that really, I guess, is an issue for another day that we have to resolve, given the economic conditions in Fresno. So maybe Councilmember Quintero and Baines could come back with a more expanded view of that whole issue about local preference. But in the meantime, I think, I think we need to, I'm going to vote, make a motion to approve this item. But I think we have to do certain things just to function as a, as a business, as an entity, to move on and to prevent further calamities as far as, you know, meltdowns in the building and power outages. So I don't think it's the ideal way to do it, but there's no ideal solution out there. That's my motion.
One last question. In the executive summary, it indicates that it seems to be isolated to ISD. Would that back up any other system in the building?
No, this is specifically for ISD, to maintain the heating, the cooling, and the power and lighting to the ISD. Two through four? Oh, it also includes the emergency lighting on floors two through four.
Okay, thank you.
Well, different things came up in this conversation that I wasn't anticipating. They're all very interesting. Who sets the standards, and I don't know who to answer this question, Doug, it might be you? Or Bruce, it might be you? I'm not sure. Who sets the standards on, on our local use, you know, preference to a local company? Is that a statewide?
That, that is that, if I recall, that's a council direction. Council can set the standard. The last time we went through this, there was concerns about where we do this, and then even what is defined as local preference.
Okay.
Because if you defined it too narrowly, this, and, and Councilmember Quintero was right, it was, we were awarding a, a contract to buy automobiles from a dealership in Clovis.
So is that a, is that a policy?
It's a policy.
It's a policy?
My understanding, it's a policy.
In our charter or?
No.
No, not in our charter, but we have the ability to set our own local standards?
That is my understanding.
Okay. That's a vote of council, and it would be across the board. We couldn't just pull out bid number four here and award that contract to this?
No, not now.
Local?
No, because you haven't, you haven't established a new policy yet.
Okay. Well, so I would love to establish that policy before awarding this contract. What if we, so is that a matter of RFP, changing the policy within a RFP? What if we went RFQ? Could we?
Well, I don't, I don't, an RFQ won't get you anywhere. What you would need to do, I'm looking down at the city attorney, is that you would have to reject this bid, direct staff to go back out the bid, and we would hold off going back out the bid until council made a determination as to what it wanted to do with the local preference.
All right, I'm pretty clear on that part then. So, did you want to say something? Okay. So my office computer is so slow and sluggish that I haven't turned it on in four months. I use this laptop. I really agree with what Councilman Brand's talking about, maybe thinking of this in a bigger picture of the future, a web-based software package. I'm very similar to Clint, computer illiterate, so I know that that probably sounded really stupid, what I just said. But it's still the fact. To me, I, I don't know if I'd miss my computer. I realize that, I realize I'm probably the only one with that problem. Though, but what does it make sense to me is a three-quarters of a million dollars spent in our local economy overrides a $12,000 problem to me. So we just promoted the food expo... So we just promoted the food expo, hopefully if we spent that 750 million, or $750,000 here, that, that business would be over at our food expo promoting local food. And so it all talk, it all started when Councilman Quintero talked about, you spend a dollar here locally, it's, kind of stays locally and starts that stirring the economy. So I'm gonna vote no. I think we have a clear screen, we have a motion, I don't even know if we have a second? Anybody have a second? Councilman Brand, you wanna?
Do I have a second?
Yeah, you have a second now.
Okay, this just, would the council consider continuing? I, I don't wanna take us up or down, maybe now, would it be better to continue it? Is there a timeline here?
No, why don't we, we can table it for 30 days. In the meantime, let me work with the city attorney, and we'll come back with something for council's consideration. And we will just reach out to the vendors and ask them if they will guarantee those prices for the next 30 days.
There is a, there is a, I believe a 64-day timeline between the time the bids open that we have to order, we have to try to get their permission to keep their bids. And I'm not sure what date that is.
February 18th, two months.
Yeah.
They extended it already.
We've already extended it.
I think if the vendors want to stay in the game, they'll be willing to extend their-
Yeah.
Thank you.
What did you just ask, Bruce?
I didn't ask, I said, it was a statement. There's a concern that the, that there's a clock on the prices. My comment was that if the vendors are interested in staying in the game, they'll extend, they will be willing to extend their prices for another 30 days.
Oh, okay.
Okay, this, this one issue's not gonna make or break, or, you know, the bigger issue of local preferences, which I think should be revisited, and software, hardware upgrades, which are out there, I think it's still a practical matter, you know, that can have adverse effects on the city. And again, if it's not a generator down, it'll be something else that will come up, we'll have to, to deal with. So, everybody's beyond me.
Hey, Steve? I'm punched up. Councilman Olivier, thank you, I just wanted to, to say to my council colleagues that I, I have, I also have grave reservations about this, this project, and I think if the vote were, well, I know if the vote were to be held today, I would have voted no, because I have such grave reservations about running the credit card when we don't have to. So, thank you. Thank you, staff.
All right, Councilman Brand.
City manager? Again, if I go 30 days, that can be any kind of timeline, that can affect anything? Is it the world gonna blow up? 'Cause here, here's what I'm thinking, this will put us in the budget process by going 30 days, so this is probably an item that could be, unless it's an emergency, would be considered in the budget anyway.
Well, the fact is, even if it gets hot, we're not gonna have a new generator in the building anyway, so I don't see where 30 days is gonna make one difference, one way or the other.
Okay, so, can I amend my motion then to, to continue the item for 30 days, and really to really take it up during the budget cycle? But again, this doesn't address the, the other issues, which should be taken up separately, so, is that okay with a second that I amend the item to do a continuance of 30 days? Okay?
If I could, Councilmember Brand, I would assume that in that third day, you would also want us to provide you some alternatives to, to start, start the process of moving data off our service to a remote-
Yes, or at least a process to a cloud. Or a plan to, over time, so we don't have, we don't have the situation repeat itself. Okay, that's my motion.
We have a motion and a second to postpone for, continue for 30 days. Nobody's punched up, I'm personally ready to vote today, but- The vote is to continue. Is Ray take a vote on that? This is voting to continue this item for 30 days. All in favor? All opposed? Nay. Okay, the continuance passes 4-3.
Council President, can you repeat who the no voters were?
The no voters were myself, Councilman Olivier, and Councilman Quintero. All right, that item has been continued. We're on to General Admin 2F. Approve the acquisition of almost 20 acres of property in the amount of almost $4 million for the Veterans Boulevard over crossing.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. My name is Pete Caldwell, I'm a senior real estate agent for the Public Works Department. The item before you pertains to the right-of-way acquisition for Veterans Boulevard to add a new interchange to State Route 99 between Shaw Avenue and Hernan Avenue, as well as new city roadway improvements, curb gutter, sidewalk, and such. Veterans Boulevard project is being funded through Metro C, Tier One funds, citywide regional street impact fees, state transportation improvement program, and the regional transportation mitigation fees. The property owner, Rancho Rivington, has agreed to the appraised value for the five properties totaling 19.66 acres of property. The appraised value for the five properties, including the value of advertising leasing signs, is $3,855,500. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Any members of the public like to address this item? General Admin, item 2F.
Guys, we'll spend nothing for yourself, but you can spend it on everything else, can't take care of your own house. Like the place burned down once before around this place. On this one here, you wanna spend, probably in the domain, take these people property, you're gonna get 19 acres for $3 million. Now you approve that for some kind of rental thing, and that's gonna take agricultural land, like we gave away 70,000 acres of agricultural farmland for development, and this is for the construction, for a limited partnership, and we don't know who this limited partnership is, you guys might be a partner to some of this limited stuff, like that bullet train, for the construction of the Veterans Boulevard. That Veterans Boulevard was out there, and you guys made that mistake out there with that running horse project, and those houses out there never was approved by the council either out there. No, I don't think you should approve this here, because President Obama said it's not that much money left in the transportation up there, 'cause they, all them bridges been burning up. And then down here, Governor Brown got that bullet train coming through here with billions of dollars, and nobody know who the boss is, and nobody, a girl couldn't tell me out there who the boss is, because she didn't know when they came to town the other day. There's a bunch of people get together. But now you ready to give away $3 million for some kind of crossing, a railroad crossing, not asking them who's on it, where's the money going, you have not asked them anything. But anything to protect your own house and save your own self, life of somebody around here, you won't even vote on it. You wanna talk about it, that's why you're not getting elected around this place no more, people tired of you. We got $3 million coming here for some kind of owned by Rancho, Rancho, and it's a limited partnership? You ready to give them $3 million of cash money? That's taxpayers' money you guys giving away. You don't even know if that road, bridge can burn up like San Francisco, had holes and stuff all in it. You won't even fix roads and holes all out here. Out there on Jensen, out there, the road is all too up out there. But yet you wanna give some kind of partnership, $3 million just for a little bitty bridge? Why don't y'all go build that bridge? I don't care nothing about what you guys up here doing, you can't give your, you can't give yourself some money to fix up that, that doggone generator? You can't go to Standard Brands, or no Pep Boys, or nobody get no generator for no $300 or $500. But you willing to give all the taxpayers' money away for all this stuff, and everybody act like y'all got a high school, a college education, and know what goes on, and can't even tie your shoes upright? This don't make sense. You're stupid. Don't make sense, you can't take care, we got a machine here that don't even work, you put, put a picture there, but you can't do it because that machine been down for two years, 'cause I used to put my paper there so you can see what the people talking about. You can't take care of your own household of faith. Now you wanna give these partnerships, are you guys in that partnership? When you come here, you broke, when you leave here, y'all gonna have millions of dollars in your pocket. I'll talk about that later, too.
Any other members of the public like to talk about item 2F? All right, that's in District 2. So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. How is this one, Councilman Caprioli and I, we just talked for a minute or two, does this, does this tie in to the portion of veterans that high-speed? So do we just purchase all the property? Is that our job, the city of Fresno, is to purchase all the property that Veterans is gonna cover? Or is that part of what High Speed Rail Authority does?
Council Scott Moser, Public Works Department. High Speed Rail Authority is buying all the, the property needed for high speed rail on their own. This portion is within the freeway interchange footprint that the city would have been acquiring anyway, for the, for the, you know, the on and off ramps, the bridge, and, and everything like that. So we're not, we're not purchasing property in any way to subsidize high speed rail acquisitions.
Yep, yep, I just wanted to make a note of that then. All right, cool. Then I'm gonna move that we accept staff recommendation and pass this.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. Any other council comments? Let's vote, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we're on to item 2G. Actions pertaining to the First Street Traffic Synchronization. It's from our Public Works Department.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. I'm Laal Gunwandi, the Design Services Manager, Public Works Department. The item before you pertains to the First Street Traffic Synchronization Project from Nice Avenue to Ventura Street. This, this runs through Council Districts 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. Staff recommends that council adopt the finding of categorical exemption, determination pursuant to Section 15301(c) of the SEQA Guidelines for the First Street Wireless Project, and award a construction contract to curtail communication doing business at Sebastian in Fresno, in the amount of $1,197,058 for the base bid, and add all needs 1 and 2, as the lowest responsive responsible will be the, for the First Street Wireless ITS project between Nice and Ventura Street. Thank you.
You. Any members of the public like to address this item? All right. Well, it spans five different council districts, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, so that leaves me out. Would any of you gentlemen like to? All right, we've got a motion to approve, a sec, we have a motion and a second, clear screen, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Yeah, you and I were out of that one, you're right, Blong. All right, we are now on to item H. Actions pertaining to Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility. And that's the Department-
Good afternoon, Council members, I'm Kevin Norgard with Department of Public Utilities, Wastewater Management Division. First thing I need to do is read something into the record on this. In addition to the Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301(b) and (d) of the SEQA Guidelines, staff has determined that none of the exceptions to the categorical exemptions set forth in the SEQA Guidelines, Section 15300.2, apply to this project. Now, the items before you today are for the rehabilitation of the Headworks Building at the wastewater treatment plant. The three items are, one, approval of resolution, the 46th Amendment to the Annual Appropriations Resolution Number 2013-98, appropriating $4,458,000 for the Clovis Regional, Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility Headworks Building, coating repair, and stop plate installation. The second one is adopt a finding of Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to Section 15301(b) and (d) of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines. And finally, award a contract for $6,367,960 to Floyd Johnson Construction Company of Clovis, California, for the design and construction of this project. Okay, basically, this project is for the repair of the concrete walls for the Headworks Building, and the concrete walls are where all the sewage flows, once it comes up into the building, it's the center-third of the building. It's somewhere around 10,000 square feet of flooring, but then there's walls in the ceiling that need to be repaired, too. The building's pushing 20 years old, and the coating is failing, and the concrete needs to be repaired. And the big, the big dollar amount for this project is the bypass, they have to bypass 80 million gallons of water a day in order to gain access to this structure. And I'll wait for questions.
Any members of the public like to comment on this item?
Oh boy, this is a good one here, that's where you guys got us drinking recycled sewage water. Action pertaining to the Fresno Clovis Regional Wastewater Reclamation Facility, Headworks Building, coating repair, and stop plate installation, District 3, that's my district. Why we gotta drink recycled sewage water, we got all that water up here in the mountains? You guys would be glad to vote for this, because it's out there killing folks. Kids out there, their boo-boo was going through the water, they got a nuclear plant right next to it, and nobody's saying nothing. Why they all they, after burning all their craft from Clovis and everywhere else come, we pay all the bills, they not paying none of this bill? How come they not in here paying some of this bill for that plant out there? The sewers, the slugs go through this thing, go out the, the ground out there, the water goes back, it goes back down to your water table, and then you tell your kids, you go drink it. Why come y'all not drinking it? City of Fresno got so much water, lakes up under this thing, they got so many wells dug around here, we got water to give away, but your people here gotta drink piss and shit around here, don't make sense to me. And I'm through, you let me alone. You ain't got, I'm talking, I got the flow up here. I'm a citizen, I'm, I pay your check, you don't pay my check. Our kids the one out here drinking this stuff. It's coming from our district, you in my district out there with your property. Southeast, that's where all our stuff going, you told me earlier, let's divide it. How we gonna divide when y'all got all of our money in your district, and sales district, and bonds district, and everybody but our district? And now they want us to bat his heads and put all this stuff up on top of this. Yes, I'm mad, 'cause it don't make sense, we got all these kids running around there, old folks out there, the worst air quality in the world running around out here, and you guys laughing like it's a joke. Don't wanna put a generator for your own butt running around here. Yeah, I'm mad. And then got me in Southeast Fresno, and I know doggone well, I'm 67, I was born in Southwest, and Southeast is getting all of our money and resources, see, home finances, CBG money, everything, all them West Fresno 1, 2, 3, and 4, all of our money merged to, all of our money and resources, you guys getting it, then built your district up, and we still out here in the same weeds, cotton passage, sewers, plants, and everything else, and you gonna tell me to be quiet? No, it gonna take more than that this time. I don't care. What time is it? It's time for you guys to wake up. Mr. Brand, this is your district. All these times, you wanna put another plant out here. Out there on Nielsen, and Thorn, Chemical Company, some, and larger, bigger. You gave us the letter, you talking about you dealt with Durham International, no, you ain't dealt with it. My letter told me you send me y'all partnership. You better wake up and smell the coffee, because God is looking, it's not gonna keep on going. And I'm gonna sit down and my light is yellow. You wait till I tell you guys on unscheduled communication what you guys are responsible for, it's gonna raise your hand.
Any other members of the public like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none. I'm gonna make a motion to continue this item, I need a little bit more time to understand what we're gonna spend the 4.4 million dollars on. I don't need a motion? Doug, can I just move to continue this item?
Yes, you can make that motion at any time.
And so I, we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Yeah. So I have a motion to continue this item. All right. We have a motion to continue this item and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion to continue passes 7-0. All right, now, I am gonna take the 2:00 PM timed item, few minutes behind on this one. Hearing to consider Plan Amendment Application Number A-3-003, it's a rezone application, and that is from Darm.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council and colleagues. I'm Sophia Pagelatis with the Development and Resource Management Department. And before you this afternoon, you have a plan amendment, rezone, and the related environmental findings for a proposed project out at the northeast corner of Clinton and Fowler. The applications were proposed by Granville Homes. And this is the vicinity map. The applications pertain to thirty-four acres of property located, again, on the northeast corner of Clinton and Fowler Avenues. This is the aerial photo. It shows the surrounding land uses. To the west, we have light industrial uses. To the north, we have light industrial and a developed pharmacy on the corner. And to the east and south, we have residential. We have a vacant tract out there, and we also have rural residential uses. It's kind of hard to see on this slide, but the, the area that looks white is actually gray. It's all light industrial. The subject property, the thirty-four acre subject property is currently planned light industrial. And the proposed plan amendment would redesignate thirty-two of those thirty-four acres to residential medium density land use and two acres of the thirty-four to neighborhood commercial land use. The zoning would follow suit. It would reclassify thirty-two of the thirty-four acres to R one UGM with conditions of zoning. And it would reclassify the two acres on the corner to C one Neighborhood Shopping Center with conditions of zoning. The property already has conditions of zoning on it, and those conditions of zoning are proposed to remain in place by staff. Those conditions, some of the council members might recall from their previous action on this site, which occurred in two thousand and seven. The conditions of zoning relate to maintaining the city's inventory of industrial land at that time. And the primary requirement in those conditions of zoning is that the applicant be required to replace forty acres of non-industrial land, put forty acres back into the inventory. This would probably be a good time to give you a little bit of background. Back in two thousand and seven, when the council previously took action on this property as part of a larger plan amendment and rezone, this land was considered key to the city's industrial land inventory and economic development goals. However, since that time, it's been about eight years, the applicant has not been able to market the land or sell the land for that purpose, even though all the planning was done. And a study was done for the general plan update identifying the critical clusters of industrial land that were needed to support the city's economic development goals. This parcel was not included in that inventory, mainly because the general plan update will include about twelve hundred additional acres proposed in the vicinity for regional business park uses. So, the staff supports this application because the loss of thirty-four acres of light industrial land, we feel, will more than be compensated for by the addition of regional business park land that's proposed in the general plan update. So, just a quick rundown of our basis for recommending approval on this project. As I just mentioned, the property is no longer considered critical for part of the industrial land inventory and support of the city's economic development goals. The proposed land use change also provides a buffer between the light industrial uses to the west and the medium-low density uses to the east. It's a good transition. The environmental impacts of the proposed residential use are less than if the property were to be used as industrial. Specifically, traffic volumes are quite a bit different. For industrial land use, average daily trips would have been over four thousand, and for residential land use, average daily trips are proposed to be about two thousand five hundred. And finally, the proposed project, the plan amendment and rezone comply with the policies of the general plan and the McLean Community Plan. These, the plan amendment and rezone were also submitted with related entitlements, which have been considered at Planning Commission. Those are a conditional use permit and a tract map for a hundred and sixty-nine lot, single-family subdivision with public streets at a density of five point three units to the acre. The Planning Commission on April sixteenth approved those applications, and of course, that approval is contingent upon your approval of the plan amendment and rezone today. At the hearing, one person spoke in favor of those applications, and there was no opposition. Council District Four also recommended approval of the applications. However, staff did receive four phone calls from neighbors to the south and southwest supporting the change from industrial to residential land use, but concerned about the density. Their recommended density was four units to the acre. The proposed density is five point three. That did not sway the Planning Commission. Their recommendation remains as I've stated. And that concludes my presentation. Our recommendation is to adopt the environmental finding of a mitigated negative declaration, adopt a resolution amending the plan, as I've stated, and the land use designations, and adopt an ordinance bill for the rezoning as previously described. With that, I'll open it up to questions.
It looked like you were gonna pop up another slide there, Sophia. Thank you. All right. Any members of the public like to comment on this item, the two o'clock timed item?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Jeff Roberts on behalf of Granville Homes. We're the property owner and the applicant for the request before you. And for the record, I'd like to state that we do concur with the recommendation of the staff and with the unanimous recommendation of the Planning Commission that occurred about a month ago. We agree with the conditions of approval that are in the staff report for both the plan amendment and the rezone, and we concur with the history that Sophia provided. We were involved at that time, and it was very accurate, very complete. So, we'd just like to supplement that by saying we support it, and we, if we have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Right. Thank you. Any other members of the public like to comment on this item?
We don't have the water. If it was a commercial use or it was something that can bring jobs for the people, because we need jobs, we don't need any more residential houses. He got thirty-seven acres here, and that's a lot of land, all them houses. We should stop all of this housing development until we get our water act together. We brought seven hundred and some thousand people here when Daddy Porell was here, and I am, you was here too, Mr. Quintero. I asked the question, where are these people coming from? Where's their track record? Nobody knows. Now, we're being taken over like we've been invaded around here with all these folks. No. No more development, no more housing, no more nothing, until we get our act together and city hall to get out here and do our own environmental impact report study, until we get a general plan in place and that we can make decision on the housing elements and take care of Southwest Fresno like Judge Kane told them. You go nowhere till you do downtown and the surrounding areas. That is in Clovis, that is their fear of influence, that is county out there, and they are, we already took seventy thousand acres of their land, and that should be a law against that. And the city of Fresno gave that away, and the county gave thirty thousand away on their own, and that's larceny over there giving land away. We should, we cannot make a general plan and go approve a project as we go. The general plan was supposed to have been already approved, already established, and we supposed to have housing elements, everything already on there. And that's the law, by law. That's what the Planning Commissioner told me about. I'm in Southwest Fresno, East Fresno, and they turned that quarter and made me Southwest, Southeast, and that was the county Fresno doing. And they telling me it's Brandon's fault, but I got them people all investigating that. We should stop all development. Granville got houses everywhere, Simi got houses everywhere. Pretty soon, they gonna own anything around here, and we, and there's no water. All the schools is all filled, all the, no jobs around here for them. They talking about taking everybody through slavery. It's no money, and redevelopment was a city council, and the redevelopment was a city council, it was an agency that's a conflict of interest, so y'all should have all that money, and that was against the law. So, everything from here on in, no more houses, no more development, no more anything till we get a general plan in place to tell us what we're supposed to do. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public like to comment on this item? Councilman Capriolio, that's District Four. Why don't you start us off?
Motion to approve.
All right. Councilman Quintero.
Sophia? This project also has eight-foot driveways, small ones?
It does not as conditioned. It has been conditioned to-
Can you repeat that? It does not?
It, it has, it has been conditioned to have a minimum of eighteen-foot driveways at this point.
At this point? What were the driveways, the ones that were approved a couple of weeks ago for the Granville project?
I'm not aware of that project. Maybe one of my colleagues can speak to that one.
Councilmember Quintero, a few weeks ago, the council did approve a portion of a tract map by Granville Homes at Copper River for the reduced garage setbacks at eight feet within the public portion of the project.
Okay. And this one is not?
Well, the item before you is simply the plan amendment and rezone. If, should those be passed, there will be an opportunity for the council to consider those other two entitlements at a later date.
Can you, there'll be an opportunity for the council to what?
To consider the tract map and the CUP that run with this property, assuming there appeal to council.
Counsel, this situation's procedurally a little different than last time. If we could explain?
Good afternoon, Council. Deputy Talia Kolori-Barbic, I just wanted to explain a couple of procedural nuances. In this particular item, a plan amendment and rezone, along with a CUP and tract map, were heard at Planning Commission. However, the Planning Commission's action on the CUP and tract map were conditioned upon council's approval of the plan amendment and rezone today, which means that if the council does act to approve the plan amendment and rezone today, then those Planning Commission level conditional approvals will become effective once the council's action is final, which would be approximately thirty days from today if the council votes today. At that time, there will be an opportunity for an interested party to petition the district council member or the mayor to bring the CUP and tract map before this body for appeal. My recollection is that the Planning Commission did approve the driveway length articulated by staff, but an applicant could request that a council member or the mayor bring that issue before this body for, for hearing. And that, and that could include an adjustment to the length of the driveways.
Okay. Thank you.
Did it sell?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. All right. The screen is clear. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. Motion passes five and one. All right. We are on to item, General Admin, item two. I approve application for the acceptance of fiscal year staffing for adequate fire and emergency response. That is from Chief.
Good afternoon, Council. Carrie Donnis, Fire Chief, for you. I'll bear with me, I'll try and get through this quickly. I'm battling that same nasty cold everyone else has. In front of you, you have a recommendation for acceptance of the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen safe staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant, or what we call Safer Grant, in the award of two million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security. What this means is this grant is twelve firefighters to enhance daily staffing by adding four firefight, a fourth firefighter on four pieces of equipment every day for two years, from the date of April sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, to April fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. This grant has no matching fund requirement, and there is no requirement to maintain that staffing beyond the two-year period. However, going forward, I think we're gonna look to address that in the five-year budget plan that's being presented. So, with that, I'm gonna leave it to you, and if you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Chief, any members of the public like to talk on this issue?
This is something that we need. The fire department, everybody's burning all over the country, all over the world, could be your house next, and they the first responders next to the police department. And this is Homeland Security money, and they got the grants, and everything is already in place. And this should be approved without anything, anything else been going, because we're taking care of our own house. And all these here, it should be approved together because each one of them says action, it says resolution, action taken. And you had another, that last item you just did, it supposed to have been three approvals, and you approved that on one vote, and it was three items on that last item, and another one earlier today, and on one vote, and you can't do that. You gotta prove each one of those items that says action taken separate, and you didn't do it. You're not doing your job. I caught that long time ago. But this one here, this is the fire department, they got the resolution, you gotta vote for every one of those, and Homeland Security is on top of all these here, and I said, let's vote for one, 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 two, and each one of them separate, and then I'm, I'll put my approval on every three of them. But you did not do that on Granville, you only proved all three of them together, and that's against the law, especially when they says action taken. One of them today, another item, you approved all three of those items together, and it was supposed to have been three items approved on that thing, and you skipped by it. And the city attorney, that was your job to bring that to their attention, and the secretary, and you bruised what? And you knows when the item says action, item action taken, you're supposed to vote on each item separate. And they did not do it, the last item, and they didn't do it once by lunchtime when we first came up in here. And this lady here, she's bringing here from the fire department, and they want to talk about what we don't need. And this one, I say, I want to put my approval on all three of them at the, at the different times, but we have to do it at the same time. You gotta have item by item, by item, so make sure that the fire department is legal and not for some kind of crap you guys don't want to know what you're supposed to doing. But any time you got an action item, everyone is supposed to be voting on separate, and you didn't do it with Granville. I want to know if y'all getting paid money, because everybody be pulled around here, and next thing I know, they come away with money. And on this one here, we need this Homeland Security, the money is already there. All you gotta do is call it back up here three times and vote yes on each one of them. But Granville, you gotta go through each one of those three separate, and then I'm gonna jack to every one of them you bring back up here, because that's the law, and the city attorney will tell you that.
Any other members of the public like to comment on this item? All right. Up here at council, Councilman Capriolio.
City manager, to maintain this staffing, I can't recall what you indicated on March twenty-seventh. How are we gonna maintain this once this grant expires?
Our five-year projections that we present to you, the budget update slash mid-year, were assuming that we are going to increase the funding for the Fresno Fire Department in fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, to absorb the increase in cost.
If that doesn't occur, will those firefighters go back to their previous status?
What it would do is we would just reallocate those employees back to, to the pool. So, what we're doing is actually allocating, we're reducing the pool and allocating these employees actually onto, onto apparatus or actually to a crew.
Very good.
And the grant is paying for that.
That's great. Thank you.
Screen is clear. Did you make a motion? I didn't hear. Did you make a motion? We have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it. Thanks, Chief, for being here.
City Attorney, the second resolution requires five affirmative votes. Is that correct?
That, that's correct.
And so, can we vote on these both together, or should we take them one, two?
Pursuant to the Brown Act and our council rules of procedure, you can vote on them together. If it were to only get four votes and one part of, one of the sub-items requires five, you can immediately revote at the request of any council member.
Okay. We're gonna vote these two together, and so, let's vote. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion passes six zero. Motion passes six zero. All right. I believe we're through the general admin portion. So we're gonna go to city council boards and commissions, communications and reports. If any council member has any report to file about any of the boards or commissions that they're on, just punch in and feel free to talk about whichever ones that you wanna report on. All right. Doesn't look like we have many reports today. I believe we were, we are done with the public portion of our agenda.
And schedule communication.
Okay. We have unscheduled communication. We have a card there. Uh, Mrs. Barbara Hunt. Barbara, you're up for unscheduled communication.
Thank you very much. What I just told you, that you put when it say action item, and his job to make sure you guys have everything correct, you supposed to vote it on each one of those separate and you missed one today. Granville was supposed to vote it on each one of those items themselves. But since you guys wanna play games with me and I'm not gonna let you do this to the fire department, and this is on that master settlement agreement and it's 1984 where the, the police don't have power and got Zack and them, the union people out there. That's why you trying to get this, this woman in there, Smith Camp in there. So they won't, uh, they won't prosecute you guys up in here. Because that, that general plan, I gave Margaret Mim a copy a long time ago, all them shootings, everything been going on around here, they had no jurisdiction, no boundaries, and they even have no business out there. And you guys approved everything and you letting these police be in harm's way and danger and you don't even try to straighten this mess out. This is what I'm talking about. Get that 1984 master settlement agreement. Porell tried to bring it up about a month ago over there with the board of supervisors. That means the city, county, the sheriff, and redevelopment, every Clovis, they supposed to got together before they can make any decision on these issues. Go back and get all those master settlement agreements that y'all made from all them years on back down. And it will tell you, this is all the big the City of Fresno is. Incorporating 1885, chartered in 1901, Californian Thorn, Thorn and Nielsen, Nielsen back over here, the first, first back over there, the most sunway razor plant on California Avenue. Just that box. You, that's why the board of supervisors, you guys, they wanna talk to you guys so you can see where your boundaries are. Your boundaries is overlapping. The sheriff department can go anywhere around here, but the city of police can only go in their area. And you guys have got them people going everywhere, getting them in harm's way. Ain't nobody, these people out there, they can go shoot all y'all, get all y'all money, bring a lot of lawsuits up, see what's going on around here because you guys got them in danger. And this did not make sense. This is what I've been telling you all the time. You guys wanna listen to me, maybe you will listen to the paper. Every time I turn around, you guys wanna talk about what the gangs are doing. No, what have you guys done? That's all I wanna say about that issue. My next issue is on Southwest Fresno. All those signs over there, my election department, the boxes over there, uh, got eased and Brandy, um, what's it, Larchon Secretary told, the only way they can change it is, um, put all those people, the address costs millions of dollars to get them changed. Brandy, I told her like Larchon Secretary told me, call the police, make a police report against all that. All that's illegal. All of our tax money, all our tax increments that were sold for downtown area, the 1976 general obligation bond, you sold all the downtown to them Simi brothers and them Granville and some more partnerships. I had the bond booked. Jack O'Connor got it right now. You guys letting all this stuff go. My question is, you guys is not vulnerable. You guys are in trouble. If these guys would go out here educated, don't even have to have an education, just go by what I'm saying and do some research, you guys would be, y'all would be in so much debt. It would be so much lawsuits. Everybody be asking so many questions.
You didn't hear your bell again. It went off a minute ago.
I didn't see the light go, I didn't see the light go off anyway, but I'm ready to go home. No, I've got one more to go.
All right.
Let, ring it so I can hear it right now.
Well, can you ring that?
Ring me the bell. I would've heard that.
All right. We're done with the public, uh, portion. We're done with the public portion of our meeting. We're gonna go into closed session, but I wanna remind everybody that we will be adjourning our, uh, meeting today in memory of George Salwasser Jr. Thank you.
Council for, uh, closed session today. We have conference with legal counsel, existing litigation on the City of Fresno versus Chevron case, conference with real property negotiator concerning the listed APN, and also another existing litigation case, actually the two cases of City versus Vegum and Vegum versus the City of Fresno. I would not expect any announcements after the closed session.